Thank you, everyone, for coming on your busy schedules on Saturday morning. It's a great honor to have you here because you're here because we want to give you good information to take back to move this city forward. As you know, the theme is to be part of the solution and help move the city forward, and your presence here says you want to be part of a positive solution. So before we begin the meeting, I ask everyone to please rise and bow your heads. We're going to have a word of prayer with Pastor Cook, our Minister Cook, and then also we will then go into our presentation. Pastor, or Reverend?
Better known as Brother Robert Chelsea. We just signed. Let's bow our heads together. Father, any meeting would not be worthy, or worthwhile, or significant if it didn't have you at the hub. So we pray because you happen to have a councilman that is a godly man. We pray for this meeting and the success of it. We pray for each one that's here, not just the breakfast, the host, the hostesses, the building, the servants that are here, the workers, the employees, the committee members, and each and every individual that represents their organization. The organization has no pulse, but the people here do. So we do pray that you'll bless them, bless this precious effort, that it may be as successful as the councilman has a vision for. In Jesus' name, amen.
So to start off the town hall meeting, this is something different. I want to share with you the vision that I have for the city and want to make sure each of you provided a copy. If you received your handouts, one of those handouts was in fact a opening letter from me to you as residents of District Four, and it talks about new leadership, new direction, and a bright future for the city of Inglewood. The city of Inglewood, like many cities, has faced some tough times, but through the cohesive team that the voters have placed into office, the City Council now has a solid foundation on which we can increase our momentum and move the city forward. We have solidified our commitment for the multi-million dollar investment and remodel of the Forum by Madison Square Garden, and thereby giving them the assurance of ample parking for their patrons. We have the synergy of many new businesses, developers, and non-residents that see the city of Inglewood as a great place to live, work, play, and shop. The Hollywood Park Land Company is moving forward with a conversion of 238 acres of highly underutilized land into the massive development that will include both luxury housing and new retail with major national tenants interested in investing in our city. There is a clear vision that affordable housing for seniors and families with a focus of improving their quality of life in the city of partnership with the Chandler Development and Prairie Inc. With the developments that are already on the books and additional development on the way, the result will be a major stimulus for local jobs, jobs, and more jobs. And not just any jobs, but jobs that pay prevailing wages, prevailing union-scale wages. I also see us tackling the much-needed infrastructure improvements for our streets, water, sewer lines. To be successful requires superb planning, the willingness to execute, and to follow through the completion, and our City Council has the focus and determination. That is my opening statement. Also, I gave everyone in your packet should be pens. There's plenty of paper within that packet. I want to give you some talking points about what's going on in the city, particularly in District Four. Those that may want to make notes can do so as I speak. For the District Four Town Hall Meeting, the city Inglewood programs, events, and news. The city of Inglewood and the South Bay Workforce Investment Board co-sponsored a new Inglewood teen center at the Inglewood Main Library. In February 2012, the First Lady Michelle Obama visited the city of Inglewood's District Four to promote the ability of healthy food choices in underserved communities and her partnership with the North Gate Markets. In an effort to expand upon that vision, on June 18, 2013, the City Council approved the drafting of an ordinance that would allow a farmer's market in the city of Inglewood on the south side of City Hall. In 2013, free summer lunch program is being held on Monday through Friday, June 21st until August 30th, for youth 18 years of age and under. This free lunch service will be held at 12 locations across the city, including three locations in District Four, Benet Q Elementary School, the Lockhaven Community Center, and Inglewood South Side Christian Church. For additional information, please check the flyers that was made available for you earlier today. For those that do not have access to Inglewood Cable, Channel 35, on Time Warner Cable, you can view a recording of this, as well as prior District Four Town Hall Meetings, via YouTube Talk, I'm sorry, via YouTube link on the city Inglewood website, which is www.citininglewood.org. For those of you who do not have access to or use a computer, a master DVD of each Town Hall Meeting is provided to the District Four ICOP Center that is located at 2666 Western Imperial Highway, and is available for you to check out for free and view with your family and your block club. The District Four ICOP Center, which is located, which I gave you the address, at the Crenshaw Imperial Shopping Center, you can speak to our liaison, Mr. Aaron Elsie. Is he in the room right now? I think he's outside helping Ms. Matthews. The center's telephone number is 310-330-5346, and that's Monday through Thursday, and the hours are 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Our emergency hotline numbers has recently been updated to include the emergency service numbers for both city of Inglewood water customers and Golden State Water Company water customers. Please pick up a flyer, again, that's been made available right outside, and also with numbers listed. You should experience any water disruptions or in need of emergency services through Public Works, those numbers are what you need to keep on your refrigerator. For job opportunities listings have been placed in almost two years, and we have experienced tremendous success. Just over the past three months, we have been notified that more than 20 persons have found full-time and part-time employment through our job referrals. Thank you for the many individuals, organizations, churches, who are taking the time to pass the information along to the family members, neighbors, customers, and members. Those who may have an interest in being added to our jobs list can provide their name and email address on a signing sheet by contacting my assistant, Ms. Clydes Matthews, which is right outside the door, or you can call her office number at 310-412-8605. For the public works projects, the contractor that has been approved by the City Council to perform the work on the long-awaited left-hand turn signal modification at the intersection of 104th Street and Crenshaw Boulevard has begun. All right. The project will include new wiring and new mass arms, and will be completed by October 2013, and we have some of the pictures showing you that as well. There are several water main replacement improvement projects either going on or have been recently completed throughout the District Four on Wilkie Avenue at Cullavan Street and on Yukon Avenue at 108th to Imperial Highway. All projects will be completed soon. The city will be working with AT&amp;T to close off and seal an open vault located at 104th Street near Yukon Avenue. Over the next six months, the city will be performing a street improvement project on La Brea Avenue and Marcus Street to 104th Street. For public safety and quality of life issues, a special task force has been set up by the Inglewood Police Department to crack down on the increase in prostitution activity on Century Boulevard, Imperial Highway, and Prairie Avenue. Direct patrols have been instituted by the police department in an effort to reduce and eliminate these activities. Homeless encampments have also been the focus directed by the patrols of the Inglewood Police Department, specifically in the areas of 110th Street and Prairie Avenue, Century Boulevard and Crenshaw Boulevard, Prairie Avenue at Imperial Highway, and Imperial Highway at Arden. Also, I should alert you that at the Imperial-Crenshaw Post Office, the Inglewood Police Department was successfully able to arrest a mail thief, M-A-I-L thief, rang for possession of stolen mail, for the possession of mailbox with mailbox phishing devices, which were used to retrieve mail from mailboxes located outside the U.S. Post Office. These are federal crimes, and the Inglewood Police Department will be working with the U.S. Postal Service on this investigation. Let's give our officers a hand as we speak on that. Several unoccupied homes have been targeted for invasion while the homeowners were having their homes fumigated, and the Inglewood Police Department are performing extra patrols in these areas as well. An increase in vehicle burglaries in the village at Century Shopping Center, Costco, has promoted the police department to perform extra patrols in these areas. Public safety concerns have been expressed by a union organization called Unite Here, Local Levin, for patrons here at Hollywood Park Casino that the police department is addressing as well. Report on gang activity and gang hangout, particularly near 109th Street and Prairie, is also being under investigation. And then several weeks ago, speeding activity occurred on West 111th Place between Yukon and Lamone Avenues, which resulted in the damages of several vehicles that the vehicle hit and ran and hit three parked cars as they took off. The police department was called to the scene immediately. They responded in a matter of minutes, and they were successfully able to follow the direction that was given by the residents as to where that vehicle last went, and they were able to find that vehicle at 2:00 a.m. in the morning at Brolahut Parking Lot, and he was apprehended with... Medical marijuana dispensaries, medical marijuana dispensaries are banned in the city of Inglewood. According to our Inglewood Municipal Code, Section 12-16.4, and it went into law in 2008, currently legal action is being taken to close existing dispensaries in the city. There is an outreach that the council made that we said no on A.B. Assembly Bill 277. It's called a tribal state gaming bill. This bill was approved that would allow Indian gaming to be conducted within 30 miles outside of an existing Indian gaming eligible lands, which would negatively impact existing gaming operations in urban areas such as right here in Hollywood Park Casino. So if you have a Indian tribe that is, let's say that is in San Bernardino, as an example, they could possibly come within 30 miles from San Bernardino, where their property's located, and build a slot machine casino, which would have a domino effect for our revenue stream that we get right here for our card players here. Couple more items. Lockhaven Community Center updates. The park, recreation, and library services has instituted a new policy to ensure that those organizations, groups, who secure permits for the use of the Lockhaven Community Center have access to the center. A staff member has been assigned to open and close the center until an additional staff member is hired to oversee this location. In addition, we now have vandal-resistant noise reduction windows have been installed at both the Lockhaven Community Center and the Crenshaw Imperial Library to reduce the fading of furniture and carpeting. And third, the city of Inglewood obtained a grant in the amount of $29,000 for new playground equipment at the Lockhaven Community Center, and the new equipment has now been purchased and installed. Demolition update. All the vacant buildings along 102nd Street between Dodie Avenue and Prairie Avenue have been demolished. The remaining debris has been removed, and the soil has been leveled. We're well on our way. And then finally, the recreational vehicles and oversized vehicles, including motorcoaches, trailers, and boats, will soon have to comply with a new parking requirements that limit the parking of vehicles in excess of 20 feet in length and 6 feet in height from parking on any street in the city for more than two consecutive hours, and must maintain a distance of no less than 10 feet from all adjacent driveways. This order is expected to take in full effect by no later than the end of this year. That is my opening remarks. Are we on board?
On board.
All right. And I think this is a great segue, since I've already shared with you about the vision of the city that I gave you, and also about being part of the solution to help move the city forward. I think it's only fair and fitting that I recognize some of my colleagues that's on the council, and obviously, I'd be remiss if I didn't let one person speak who's making his way up here. But let me introduce, first of all, our new council member that is here in the audit today, Mr. Alex Padilla. And then for those that are not aware of it, and I want to be on the record, like I was at the council meeting, I'll be on the record at the town hall meeting, this council member is here to serve you in District Four. I have not pledged, nor do I have interest, to serve unless the Lord calls me to become the mayor for the city. The mayor and I are a great team together. We identify that we have like vision, we have the same spirit with a focus in mind of quality of life for this community. It's my pleasure and honor to recognize our distinguished mayor, James T. Butts Jr.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have to tell you, I've got to find out what the councilman's secret is. He must be giving away free stuff, right? I've got to tell you, it is such a pleasure to be here and to give my recognition and praise of Councilman Franklin. He served as the chair of the South Bay Council of Governments over the past year, and he's done wonderful things as we've collaborated to improve the quality of life in Inglewood. And I don't want to be redundant because I didn't hear what you said, and you didn't write it down for me, so, but I want to recognize a few entities that are new partners with us. I want to recognize Republic Services, our consolidated, our new waste hauler. I would tell you that they have improved the appearance, and therefore, the quality of life in our community, because we're in the midst of putting together several building blocks environmentally, economically, and politically that have us poised now to recapture and go beyond what Inglewood used to represent to the South Bay. And so I want to give a hand to people from Republic. Oh, stand up and be recognized, Councilman says. Jay Fowler is the general manager for our area, and Don Harris is, everyone knows Don. She's everywhere, and I believe it's Sam Pena, works with Don, and they are of presence in our community. I want to recognize Irene Baker and Nick Spomato from Madison Square Gardens. Would you guys stand, please? I know the councilman's mentioned this, but we all know, back in the day, the Forum and Hollywood Racetrack were the economic engines for the city. And when we lost to Lakers and Kings, and perimeter racing came into vogue, and we lost our crowds, we kind of lost our punch, and the recession came and finished everything off. And there were so many people across this country that wrote Inglewood off. And one of the first things that happened when I came into offices, we got into conversations with Madison Square Garden, and they believed in, and they invested in, that economic furnace that is the Forum. And any that doesn't get recognized enough, if Faithful Central Bible Church hadn't bought the Forum and held on to that asset for all those years, it would have been bulldozed and it would have been condominiums, and there would have been no Forum. And so, you know, the next time you see Bishop Olmer, Mark Little, you need to give them a thanks, because that asset was there, we're able to do what we can do now in the time that we're doing it now. And there's going to be a big press conference on Tuesday, and the world is going to hear about when the Forum's going to open and the acts that are planned, and that was the catalyst, of course, for the investment in Hollywood Park tomorrow, and now this will take off. We have so many offers of interest with people with their own money now that want to invest in Inglewood. So, you know, this, and then with what you guys, well, maybe District Four didn't, but what happened on June 11th with the change in the council, well, now it's complete, because we have the political unanimity, the cooperation and cohesiveness to let people know that we're a very, very serious entity. And the last thing I want to do is recognize the police department. Now, you could plow. Ever since Chief Kennedy, back in 1973, he was the last homegrown Inglewood police chief, someone that came up through the ranks and ascended to become the chief here in Inglewood. I thought that I would be the next one, but fate had other designs. But we appointed Mark Frantarada to be the interim and then the permanent chief, and here's what he's accomplished in his time. For the first time since I've been associated with the city, and that's 1972, we have less than double-digit homicides through the summer. There have been four homicides. You know, and people don't like the comparison, but those are Santa Monica, Culver City numbers, better than Culver City, actually. So I want to recognize the chief and Lieutenant Freed, because they're here representing the police department. Could you guys please stand and be... So we have all the pieces, the political will, public safety component, economic development, and we are poised, and we're actually already going. So thank you very much, and thank you, Councilman, for the time.
You received a number of handouts, and our sponsors helped contribute to these items that you're going to be taking home and sharing with your friends, neighbors, and loved ones, sharing, emphasize, sharing the information. South Bay Environmental Service Center, Consolidated Disposal Service, West Basin Municipal Water District, South Bay Workforce Investment Board, and our Inglewood Police Department and the city of Inglewood. So let's give our sponsors a hand as well. We have a very big agenda, and I'm going to try to move it as fast as possible, but I've been advised that intermittently, we may have some other guests that may come in as well, so as the guests come in, I will try to recognize them, but we need to move the agenda first. First of all, I should recognize from Steve Rafford's office, Assembly Member, 62nd District, Avalino Valencia. Is she here? Recognize, oh, he. Thank you very much, Avalino. Our distinguished Water Board Representative, Gloria Gray. And I want to recognize, if you are a block club captain, a commissioner of the city, or a board member of the city, or a council assistant, would you please stand to be recognized? Any of them? Thank you so much. So as you see, our commissioners, the board members are arriving as well, because they are your eyes and ears at all of the meetings that they represent as well. But enough, let's move on to why you're here. I have reached out, for those, the reason why I have town hall meetings, it is accumulation of my visits on your block, or neighbors calling me up and saying I have these issues. So based upon the tabulation, it seems like we all have a pulse that there is a bona fide issue, and that is called quality of life. So as I accumulate these different concerns in my visits, as well as the calls I receive, I think it's now fair and fitting that we now present to you, through the experts in that particular field, what is the outcome. So at this time, it's my distinguished pleasure to recognize our chief, Mark Frantarada, from the Inglewood Police Department.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
You know, Councilman Franklin, and I know there's Councilman Padilla here, and certainly the mayor, I want to thank them for those kind words, but it's really them that I've been humbled to bestow this great honor to be the chief of police for this city. I've been employed here, that I consider this my home, for 31 years, almost 32 years now. So, and to those block club captains out there, I salute you, because you are our eyes and ears. And certainly to the members of the community that, you know, participate in those programs and call us with your concerns, again, I salute you, and I appreciate that, because we can't do it without you. And I have to say, Councilman Franklin has always been a very, very strong supporter of public safety, and I appreciate that support over the many years. And, you know, it's all a team effort and working together. We're going to get this done. The mayor and the councilmen spoke about the future vision of this city. We have components of that here today, but I firmly believe, and I'm very confident, that the city is moving forward in a very positive and right direction. And my responsibility, the responsibility of the men and women of the Inglewood Police Department, is to touch upon something, obviously, crime is always the first subject matter that I always talk about with my staff, because that's the number-one priority, but also what I've raised the bar on is dealing with quality of life issues. And I know that's very near and dear to a lot of everyone in this room, and I know it is to the councilmen, and we talk about issues all the time, and he champions your causes often with me. They're robust discussions, and I appreciate that, and I respect that. My job is to bring you the most professional police department in this state, and that's where this agency is going, and that's my commitment to you, and that's my commitment to this community. I am going to raise the bar on professionalism. I already have many things in motion to do that internally. We call it the infrastructure, the kind of the boring things, but those things have to be done. But as I move this agency forward and to parallel where the city is going in the positive direction, and I truly believe that this city will not look the same in three to five years in terms of economic growth and so forth. It's just better days are ahead of us. I'm excited about that, and we're going to deliver to you a first-rate police agency that respects everyone, and that's my commitment to all of you. So with that, I'm going to go into some, I always talk about crime first. And one thing I want to say is, I always maintain that, you know, one crime is one too many, and certainly anybody who's been victimized by crime, you know, I have a heavy heart, and we pray for those who have been the victims of violent crime and senseless crimes. With that, we have to work within things, and the most proud aspect of these stats that I can say, but again, I want to emphasize that one crime is one too many, but that violent crime is down almost a little over 14 percent. That's a significant number. I would like it to be much higher, and we're striving for that, but that's an important number to look at. Something that, you know, just on a side note, tomorrow, there'll be a peace ride with probably about over a thousand motorcycles coming through the city around 2:00. We'll have a deployment for that. The reason why I'm bringing that up with this segment here is, and it'll come through from 120th and Crenshaw, go down to Manchester, and then head west or left down to La Brea and then north out of the city. But endeavors like this are important to me, because it drives at the heart of driving down violent crime and senseless killings and so forth. So anything of that nature, we support it as a police department, and we're honored to assist these folks that will be coming through tomorrow. Might be a little inconvenient, so if you're, you know, around 2:00, you may not want to go down Crenshaw or try to cross over there. But in terms of anything, you know, it's not just, again, law enforcement that drives at these numbers, it's what all of you do, calling us, and we have, I know there were some flyers handed out with a lot of phone numbers on them, including my number, and, you know, certainly, call us when you see things out there, and we'll certainly respond. Again, quality of life issues have been very high on the pecking order for us, certainly dealing with homelessness, which is a very complex issue. I have Lieutenant Freed here. He will be getting a little more details on that. But another program that we started is I put lieutenants in each district, so District Four, your lieutenant representative is Lieutenant Mark Freed, so that, and again, that information is all on that handout that you have, and you can reach out to him through phone numbers, email, or whatnot, and convey your concerns, and we will look into them and make sure that we follow up on them. Again, dealing with those quality of life issues is very, very important. But again, tomorrow around 2:00 will be that peace ride, it'll probably be about a thousand motorcycles coming through. It's all good, though. It's not a bad thing. These are good people, and we fully expect that to be uneventful, other than inconvenience of traffic flow. of traffic flow. You can go to the next slide. One of the aspects that I wanted to just touch upon real quick, some of you may or may not know about it, but it's something that's called Assembly Bill 109, or otherwise known as realignment. Have anybody heard about that in, in the papers and so forth? Yeah, this was, this began in about October 2011, and a three-panel judge basically ordered the California prison population to be reduced by about 30,000 inmates. So, what they did is they took low-level offenders, they call them, non-sex offenders, non-serious felons and so forth. They call them N3s or P, P, PRSPs. I always have to think about that when I say it. But that stands for post-release supervised persons, but that's neither here nor there. The bottom line is, is that a lot of these low-level individuals have been released back into the community. Obviously, LA County has seen the largest population of these folks to the tune of about 20,000. The three-panel judge wanted another 10,000 released by the end of the year. The governor has filed an appeal with the California Supreme Court, so we're waiting to see the ruling on that. But the reason why I bring this up, because it deals, it drives at the heart of property crimes, and you can see that they've spiked significantly. And let me just say this much. Property crimes have, have spiked significantly throughout the entire state, certainly the county, not just in Inglewood. So, whether you're in Inglewood, Beverly Hills, San Bernardino, everybody is seeing double-digit increases in property crimes. And so, they're still compiling a lot of the data. When I say that, DOJ, the State, Department of Justice, the State, but it just seems to correlate, when those individuals started to be released from the prison population, that the property crimes began to increase. The, if you go to the next slide, Mark. The, and you can see some of the breakdowns on burglaries, thefts. And the reason why I want to bring this up is, one, I want you to be aware of it, and certainly, two, you know, I always talk about, as a citizen, certainly as police officers, we always talk about what's called situational awareness. Know your surroundings, whether you're, you know, going into a store or whatnot, 7-Eleven to buy a cup of coffee, or whatever the case may be, Starbucks if you're so inclined. But you should take a look around before you just walk in blind. And when it, when it deals with your property, your house, you know, one, if you can afford an alarm system, please get one. First of all, you have your neighborhood watch group. You see someone suspicious, or you don't recognize in your neighborhood, call us. We'll go, we'll go make contact with them. One of the tricks that they're, these, these folks are doing is they'll knock on your door, they have a truck waiting down the street, no one answers the door, they drive up, someone runs behind the back, kicks the door in, and they take some stuff, and they're gone. So, again, the neighborhood watch group is really important, calling us, but also do things to protect yourself. If you can afford an alarm system, absolutely get one. And make sure you keep it on, because we get a lot of people who have them, and they forget to turn them on, and the next thing you know, their house is burglarized. You know, don't leave valuables in your car, you know, where there's someone walking up to your driveway, can see it, break the window, and, and you know, take a laptop or something. You know, things of that nature. If you have a lot of shrubbery, you know, try to scale it back. Proper lighting, things of that nature. Good locks on your systems, on your door systems, windows, et cetera. You know, it's not foolproof, but make it tough. Make it tougher. And again, be those eyes and ears out there for us, and we're here to support you and respond to those calls. But I want you to be aware of that, that that is a problem statewide, not just in Inglewood. Every chief in LA County, and there's about 47 of us, I was at a conference recently, and every single one of them was saying the same thing. I was in a conference two days ago with Attorney General Kamala Harris, and we were talking about this, and I voiced my concerns with this. And she assured me personally that the governor is going to appeal this next release of 10,000 individuals. It's, it's, it's a challenge for us, but these, you know, it's a challenge overall statewide. The cost of incarcerating an individual is very costly, so they're looking at alternative methods to deal with that. At the end of the day, we have to be more vigilant in what we do. I do have individuals on a task force specifically assigned to deal and monitor these types of individuals. So, we're hoping to drive these numbers down considerably. But again, I want to emphasize, please do those, those, take, take those measures that I spoke about and put those into place. Yes, sir?
Are there any study, any more on the zip codes that the early release people are able to use?
You know, there-
Are we have a heavy requirement or sort of our early release-
Okay, let him please finish this, lady man, because we want to, we want to record what you're saying. So, can you repeat what he just said, and then that way we can use it? Okay.
Well, I would just ask-
Hold it there.
I didn't want to go to history. I just wanted to know, is there any data on the zip codes or areas that these early release people are being released to? Is there a heavy preponderance in California? Is there a heavier preponderance in, in Inglewood or surrounding areas? Where are they going when they get released?
You know, there, this is a California issue, so the panel, the three-judge panel, federal panel, decided that we needed to significantly reduce prison population. So, those individuals have been sent across the state. There's some numbers for you right there. I know in Inglewood, we have, it's indicating 159. I don't have it broken down by zip codes. However, yeah, and as you can see, they, they're, they're kind of, Long Beach has a heavy population of them. But the, these individuals are, you know, I'm going to have to emphasize, a lot of these individuals, you know, are in compliance. So, you know, it's, it's like anything, it always boils down to a small percentage of people, you know, can, doing bad things, committing crimes. We have a, I've implemented a number of crime-fighting measures that we have, and I'm not sure if you're aware, we have crimemapping.com, if you're aware of that, but that's the ability to go online, and you can see crime statistics for the city on there. That just went into effect maybe about a month ago. But I have some other software that we're putting into place, so that we can more surgically and strategically deploy our resources to deal with these problems and issues. But to answer your question directly, that's the number we have, and not down by zip code. I hope that helps you. And they are, they're being released statewide, but I have to say, the majority of these folks, you know, we have, LA County has the highest population. So, with that, that creates, you know, an increased, you know, burden on us in terms of what we have to do. But there was a couple of other things I just want to touch upon that the councilman mentioned. One of the strategies that I put into place when I, when I was, began as interim chief was what was called directed patrols, and that's the ability to put officers into specific areas where problems are happening, and we have seen some significant results of driving down crime as a result of that. Freeing up those officers to give them the time to deal with, you know, systemic issues and so forth. We plan to build on that even more so as, you know, as expand the department. I would be remiss with such a large audience and being recorded if I didn't say that the Inglewood Police Department is hiring on all fronts. Police officers, custody officers, dispatchers, records clerks. So, if you have sons or daughters, or relatives, or friends, you can go to inglewoodpd.com, and please, you can fill out an application online and be submitted electronically. We welcome those. I always am, have a keen eye for people who submit applications from the community. So, I would love that, and please do that. Yes, sir?
My thought, there's quite a number of people that are retiring now. There are quite a number of people that are retiring. And for an example, records clerks, they may be one of your greatest assets to maintain some of the lower-level or light-duty, if you will, performances, and I'm wondering if that's under consideration. Normally, you know, you're looking for, like you said, sons and daughters, but the 55 and over might serve well in that capacity as well.
Yes, you're, you're absolutely correct, and we welcome that. Actually, I have some, and your Beatley-aison person, Mr. Elsie, for to begin with, is a, you're very fortunate, and he's a good man, and he's a hard worker. But in, in terms of what you've stated, yes, we, we already are doing that. We, we employ on a part-time basis a number of retirees and so forth that can come in and, and fill in some of the gaps for us right now, because we are low in our numbers, and we, we need good people. Police officers, I need those, those young ones that, you know, can still climb the, climb the fence or get over the wall. And, and you know, it's, again, if you have any daughters or sons, or relatives, or friends and so forth, please have them go online. I know the councilman's giving him, and I just want to touch upon two things the councilman asked me to touch about. Someone had brought up increased crime stats here in this immediate area of the casino. I have pulled those numbers, and actually, those numbers are trending lower than they were last year, as of this time. And that is, that is across the board, whether it's dealing with property crimes or even violent crimes. So, I just wanted to point that out, and we, we continue to work with the casino and patrol these areas. And then lastly, as another significant strategy that we're putting forth to further drive down violent crime is, I have, in, in agreement with the council, we have signed off on four gang injunctions, which will be going into full effect probably within about 30 days. We had some legal issues we had to work through, it took a little longer than originally anticipated, but I fully expect those to be up and running in about 30 days, which I believe will further drive down that violent crime issue. So, with that, I just want to say thank you. And again, the Inglewood Police Department is here for you, and we're all in this together, and I thank Councilman Franklin.
Thank you. I did see one hand up, so we need to take this question, and then we will move forward. Thank you. Is it on?
I don't know.
Is it green?
I just want to know if that's-
It's not green. It's on pause.
I, I just wanted to give a shout-out to the police chief and to the ready response to the graffiti removal program. As a result of the swiftness of the graffiti removal, there is far, and there is less graffiti, and that's a direct result of discouraging some of the activity that's associated with the gangs is with their graffiti. And if you call and a report that you see it in process, or even that it has been done in less than 24 hours, it's clean. And that is an encouragement, and I just wanted to give a shout-out to that.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. I know the men and women of the department do. And again, call us for any of your concerns. Thank you.
All right. Give me a hand, if you would, please. I know we're running behind on the agenda, but I think it's fair and fitting. Your presence here has generated interest not only by the local officials, but I'm proud to say, we even have state and a federal official here as well. So, it would be fair, fair and fitting that I ask my mayor, our mayor, to please recognize the federal official as well as the state official, and let them make a few remarks. Mayor Butts.
I didn't see him. Didn't see him. That's what you were pointing at. Anyway, when I spoke earlier, I, I guess I didn't make it clear that Chief Frantarada is the first person since 1973 to come up through the ranks in the Inglewood Police Department and be the police chief, and I wanted to acknowledge that. And, and now that he's spoken, I'll, I'll tell you, I was his first sergeant when he came on the police department, because you liked him. It's, it's really my honor to introduce two people, and I'm going to start with the federal official first, Congresswoman Maxine Waters. In this whole journey that we've taken to reestablish ourselves and get ourselves right, you know, we've had to overcome some significant hurdles, and one of those was with our sound insulation program. We had lost authorization to our grants from LAWA for the last four years, $36 million. And along with that, we lost our access to our matching federal funds, and without that, those of you that are waiting to get your homes insulated, it would never have happened. And I first met her when I was working for the Los Angeles World Airport System, and I found out how important congresspeople are. But when I got to the City of Inglewood, and we had to deal with the FAA, and convinced them that they should follow the lead with LAWA, who agreed with me that we needed to reestablish our access to those funds, when I had a problem with them, I said, "Well, I'm going to have to call my big sister, because she going to come beat you up." And she beat them up for me. And she has been such a tireless advocate for this city, and at this critical time, when we are poised to recapture our greatness, I just wanted to tell you that I appreciate her, and we appreciate you. I want to introduce Congresswoman Maxine Waters.
Good morning, everyone. I was not supposed to be on this program this morning. Councilman Raff Franklin didn't even know I was coming by. So, I first want to thank him for holding this town hall meeting. He is known for holding town hall meetings, engaging with his constituency, and really, ladies and gentlemen, that is what makes a democracy work. Give him a big round of applause. Thank you. I want to thank Mayor Butts for his leadership. He's a very determined and courageous man, and even in the face of opposition, of people who don't understand, he provides the kind of leadership that helps to take this city where it needs to go, and helps people to understand what they need to do in order to have a functioning city with everything working. And so, he has wrestled with some issues, but he's plugged on, he's fought through them, and guess what? He's prevailing. Give him a big round of applause. I'm not going to take a lot of time, but I simply want to say that the airport is an economic engine in this whole community and all of the South Bay, and we respect that, because they do create jobs, and they're very important. But oftentimes, we have to wrestle with them also, to make sure that we are dealing with some of the noise issues and the pollution issues and the expansion issues. And so, the mayor and I have been very much involved with the issue of the expansion of the airport, and we have combined our efforts with the efforts of others in the surrounding area to try and make sure that not only is the airport functioning, but it is working with the community in order to deal with those concerns that we have. And the mayor just mentioned insulation, and I know how long many of you have been waiting, and you didn't know what was going on, but because of this mayor, that issue has been revitalized, and we're on our way now to making sure that we get the insulation program expanded and done in a way that will help to preserve the quality of life of other citizens of this community. I'm not going to attempt to give you an update on what's going on in Washington, DC. I'm ashamed to even talk about it. However, I came out earlier this morning because a group of young people, young professionals, asked me if I would come to Ladera Park. They were out there this morning, and I was so excited, because these are young professionals, they're college graduates, they're people into their careers, but they organize, and they call themselves New Alternatives, and they organize because of what happened in Florida, with Trayvon Martin, and they're concerned about young black males and all of that. And so, I had to get up and go over there and give them a word of encouragement, because this is our future. This is our future, and oftentimes, we say, young people don't care, that they're too involved with their own lives, that they're self-centered. But this group of young people who were out there this morning would have inspired everybody if you had seen them out there working, and we're going to invite them to join with us on a number of activities and give them all of the support we can possibly give them, so that they can get more involved in city government and the public schools and all of that. So, I was delighted to be there, and I thought, well, maybe I'll just stop by Raff Franklin's town hall and say hello to everybody. Quickly, on Monday, I asked the mayors of all of the cities that are in the 43rd Congressional District, that includes Inglewood, Hawthorne- District, that includes Inglewood, Hawthorne, Gardena, Landale, Lenox, part of Torrance, Lamita, and some other unincorporated areas, to come to a meeting that will be held in Gardena where we will have the HUD Secretary, Mr. Sean Donovan, to talk about several things. Number one, to talk about what sequestration means. You're hearing a lot about all of the cutbacks that are going to take place in our cities. And we don't know what's going to happen. We still have to go through the negotiation on raising the debt ceiling. And I'm hopeful in this negotiation of raising the debt ceiling, we'll be able to get rid of the sequestration because our cities cannot afford the kind of cuts that will take place if we have sequestration. Some people are concerned about the HUD offices and the fact that they have closed some of the multifamily offices that take care of multifamily concerns and needs. The other thing that we are organizing on and with the information, by the way, that will be given to the mayors and the elected officials to help them do some planning and to help them understand what maybe has to be done if we end up with sequestration. That means that CDBG, for example, will be very much threatened. And many of our cities not only use this Community Development Block grant for nonprofit organizations, but for the infrastructure. Some of my cities almost use it exclusively to back up the needs of the cities dealing with the infrastructure. So we hope that there will be a better understanding, you know, with the HUD Secretary out here about what he's going to do and how he's going to handle some of this. The other thing that we're very much involved with is the healthcare reform. Many people are asking thousands of questions about how does it work? When do we sign up? What is the role that Coverit California, the agency that has been established to be in charge of the exchanges that you will see on the internet in order to sign up for healthcare reform? What does it mean for seniors? How are hospitals going to be involved? We have a roundtable that's taking place on that at Monday with all of the key stakeholders, the health clinics and the hospitals and the organizations that have the responsibility for the implementation of healthcare reform. We'll also be talking with our small businesses about what it means to them. As a matter of fact, I may as well announce that the president basically has waived the time that the small businesses have to be involved with providing the healthcare in the way that the healthcare reform mandates. And they've put this off for a while to settle some of the concerns that small businesses have about their responsibility in this. So I hope that that information from the president will help the small businesses to be more satisfied, that they are not going to be thrown into having to provide healthcare reform that they can't afford and that our subsidies will be adequate to the job. With that, let me just say, you hear a lot about what is going on in Washington, D.C. And unfortunately, it is a divided Congress. We have the very, very conservatives versus the progressives and it's hard to get things done. It's almost impossible to get things done. I am the ranking member of the Financial Services Committee of the United States House of Representatives with the responsibility for the reform in all of financial services. It is called the Dodd-Frank Reform that we have been trying to implement for three years now. That's the reform that was triggered because of the subprime meltdown and all of the foreclosures that took place because our financial institutions had come up with these exotic products that people signed on the dotted line for, simply wanting to have a mortgage, only to find that this mortgage was going to reset in six months or a year. And all of a sudden, the interest rates were going to go up and they could not afford the house that was in their dreams, that they thought they could afford. And so what we discovered was that a lot of these loans were initiated in a fraudulent way. We also discovered that the investors in the loans had encouraged the initiation of loans in a way that they could invest in and make money. So this goes all the way from the initial salesperson all the way up through Wall Street. And in my committee, I have all of Wall Street, all of the banks, all of the World Bank, International Monetary Fund, all of the financial services issues of this country and beyond. And we really do have to make some reforms. We need our banks and financial institutions, but we cannot afford to have them do some of the things they have done in the past that caused all of these foreclosures that threaten our communities and bring our property values down. So we're working very hard. I wish I could stand here and tell you that we are going to solve the problems that are confronting us. I do know this, the president just rolled out with an economic message. He understands very well, we still have to work to deal with unemployment. We've got to fix the infrastructure of this country, the roads and the streets and the bridges and create jobs. The unemployment rates are far too high in communities such as ours and young people are suffering disproportionately because they aren't able to get jobs. And so these are the issues we are confronted with. I'm hopeful and I'm prayerful that whatever happens in the next election, that it will see a Congress that can work together and get beyond some of the politics of the day and deal with the real issues of our communities all across this nation. Thank you very much.
Well, there's only two senators in every state, 100 in the United States, and you just heard from our best. It's very good of the councilmen to allow this time for these other important elected officials to speak because it's not that often that you will have a meeting that you'll attend and you'll have representatives from the state and federal level. So this is really, really a blessing. Before I became the mayor, I didn't think there was any use for the State Assembly because I didn't know what they did. But I found out that the Assembly has a large impact on the future of a city. They voted on the demise of redevelopment. They have a great impact on the quality of life here. Just recently, there was a bill that was about to be passed that would have eliminated our ability to collect revenue from those super graphic signs that face the freeway. And it would have gone away in February of 2014. And we would have lost about a million dollars revenue to the general fund, which would have been devastating. And so from time to time, I have to go to Sacramento where there was another issue of licensing for the new operator for the casino. That represents $4 million a year to the city. When I go to Sacramento, I get the help from Steve Bradford, our Assemblyman. He's a longtime been involved here in the city. And it's just a pleasure and on behalf of the councilman who are welcome as well, that I welcome Steve Bradford.
Let's quickly give Councilman Ralph Franklin a round of applause again for bringing us all together on a Saturday morning to talk about what's most important, that which happens in our community on a daily basis. I am honored to represent the city of Inglewood as a member of the California Legislature, but I always say it's a blessing and it's a curse. It's a blessing because you have fine elected officials like the mayor, City Councilman Franklin, Congresswoman Waters. But it's a curse because I'm usually following all of them and they've already said all the important things that need to be said, either through Senator Rod Wright, Congresswoman Waters, or the mayor, the councilperson. But I won't be long, but I did want to touch upon some of the things that we're doing in Sacramento. As the mayor stated, two years ago, took a critical vote to end redevelopment as we know it, as we knew it in California for 65 years. And I've said this time and time again, and I say it again, if I had a chance to do that vote again, I would not have taken that vote. Because it was cities that were doing great projects with redevelopment. City of Inglewood's a fine example of that. And there were some cities that were making mistakes, but we shouldn't have punished everyone for the mistakes of the few. We did that. We said we were going to reform redevelopment. We wind up ending redevelopment. So now, when you see the city scrambling to do the Madison Square Garden project, it's because of the leadership of this mayor and this council that's making that happen. Because if redevelopment really would have gone the way the governor wanted it, that project would have been ended as well. So they need a round of applause. Madison Square Garden needs a round of applause for that. And as you see, the other projects that have been started and the mayor mentioned, the signage, that was critical in getting those freeway signs. When you see those electronic boards and you see those folks advertising, that's revenue for those communities where those signs are placed. When you go down the 91 freeway now and you see all those electronic billboards there, they're not there because they're convenient. They're there because they make money for not only the sign providers, but those communities which they reside. So again, they're fighting to protect well over a million dollars in revenue. So I work closely with this council as stated. Before I went to the legislature, I just served just south of here in the city of Gardena for 12 years as a city councilperson. So I know how important it is for you to come out and let your voices be heard. Because it's not about just legislating all the time, it's about advocating. And your advocacy, this council's advocacy, is going to make Inglewood the great city that it is and it's going to continue to do. I just want to talk on two things. The police chief, great police chief. He's talking about expanding gang injunctions. I would only say Senator Wright has a bill right now. Gang injunctions have their place, but they shouldn't be a lifetime sentence for those folks who are placed on those gang injunctions. Currently in California, if you're placed on a gang injunction, it's a lifetime sentence. We've got to make sure that goes away. Rod Wright, Senator Wright, has a bill that states if you're on it, you serve for a certain period of time, you're 50 years old, you still should be on a gang injunction if you're not a gang member. So we're going to have to deal with some of those issues right there, but we're moving forward. And last but not least, we talked about the airport. I'm carrying a bill that's critical to the modernization of the airport. I'm pretty sure very few folks know, other than your mayor, that the current police force at LAX does not have full police status. And they fought for full police status for years. We're the closest we've ever been in over 10 years. I'm carrying the bill. We have Mayor Garcetti on board. We have the former mayor, Antonio Villarosa. We have both the police chiefs scanning at the airport back at LAX. We have everybody neutralized on this thing. Everybody's moving forward. It's in the Senate. Senator Wright is supporting it. We need to move it forward to make sure not only LAX is protected as you travel, the third busiest airport in the world, 60 million people, but making sure your communities are safe too. So I thank you, thank the mayor for his support. And again, Councilman Franklin for this great town hall meeting and all that he brings to this community. Thank you.
And that is, not everyone has an economic base equivalent to yours. And unfortunately, their economic base is subservient to yours, but then they have a tendency of wanting to use your resources to stabilize their lifestyle, which is called homeless encampments. We have a particular officer that is assigned specifically for our area. You heard the chief announce him. Please help me recognize my friend and the person that helps me on a day-to-day basis on issues involving your district, our district, our home, Lieutenant Mark Fried.
Now, you know I'm the one that you should feel sorry for. I have to follow professional speakers and then I have to come up and talk about homeless issues. I brought this train to a screeching halt. But I'm going to do my best, bear with me. Again, my name is Lieutenant Mark Fried. I am the police department's liaison to Council District Four. Out front, I placed about 100 flyers with contact information on them. Please get one when you leave if you don't have one already. It has my phone number on there, email addresses, other helpful sites that you might want to go to, graffiti abatement, water. And we try to update those numbers regularly and they do change from time to time. So that's probably the last best set of numbers you want to have. Take that, put it on the refrigerator so you have access to it. Yeah, I am, I appreciate the councilman inviting me here today to discuss homeless issues. He and I do talk on a regular basis. He is a tireless advocate for you with the police department. He emails me all hours of the day and night. His office calls me when we have, when you call him with constituent issues, he gets ahold of me and we work to solve these problems. And it is my pleasure, by the way. One change on the flyer I handed out. There is a email address. It's policeinfo@cityofinglewood.org. It's on there. It's titled Police Information. If you're sitting at your computer, your tablet, your iPad, your phone, and you see an issue, you see a problem, you see graffiti, you can always email me. And what I do is even if you call graffiti abatement, what I do is I follow up and make sure they've done what they need to do. Because every once in a while, in any bureaucracy, there's a drop off. But we sort of, I keep a list of that stuff and I make sure I send police officers out in the field. And they're here seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and I have them check to see if those items have been taken care of. And if they're not, I send a follow-up email and make a phone call. It makes a little more of a difference if I call and I stay on, let's say, Public Works, who does a great job, they follow, make sure that stuff gets taken care of. So just a little housekeeping issue. And I'm going to be here throughout the meeting. I'm going to stay for the entire town hall. I will be here available to you because the councilman's leaving me to 10 minutes. I could talk for 10 hours on homelessness. But I will be here. If you have a specific issue or problem that you would like to talk to me about, I'm happy to discuss those issues with you. And I can go off that topic. If you want to talk about anything related in my field of expertise, I'm happy to listen to. Okay? And we can figure it out. If you have a problem, we can talk about it. Anyhow, I'm going to talk about homelessness as it relates to District Four. And when I'm talking about homeless issues, I have to talk about the history of mental health in this state. I think it's important to touch base. And I'll give you a little history. I'm going to talk about the nature of the problem in Inglewood as it exists today and a little bit about strategies and approach we're doing to deal with the problem. A little bit of history. Most of you were around in the 60s. As I can tell, some of you are older than I am, some of you are much younger than I am. But in the 60s, we had a fundamental shift in policy in the state of California, across the United States frankly, but in California is what we're concerned with. And what happened is we had mental health institutions, we had hospitals where folks with mental health issues were institutionalized, either by their families or by physicians, and they were placed there. And they were cared for and they were given treatment. And if any of you recall, the standard treatment for mental health issues in the 1960s was electroshock therapy. And in the 60s, culturally, we looked at electroshock therapy as torture, inhumane. And in many respects, I suspect it was. I mean, there's a lot of empirical data to show that was successful, but what happened in the 60s is pharmacology, medicine came into effect and we found medications were a much better choice for treating mental illness. If you were depressed back in the 60s, they took you and gave you electroshock. I prefer medication. If I'm having a bad week or a bad month, I don't sleep, I would prefer something other than electroshock. So anyhow, they were, but there was a safety net in that many of the homeless people we find today, better than 75%, have significant psychological impairment. They are, many of them, and what we deal with in the city of Inglewood are schizophrenics. So what happens is when they close mental health hospitals, the funds were reallocated, there were no, there was no transition to outpatient facilities. The safety net wasn't well thought through. And ultimately, a percentage of the mental health needs and folks that were being treated left state hospitals and went to the streets. And they ended up on the streets. And so what happens is that it isn't in and of itself a police problem, but it becomes a police problem. Their behaviors, when you have, when you see somebody acting out, they're talking to themselves, they're consuming alcoholic beverages and they're publicly intoxicated, or they're lying across the sidewalk, you call the police. There's no other person to call. We understand. So we, as an issue, there's a percentage of the population, it's about 0.3% of the population that ends up homeless, and about 75% of them have significant psychiatric issues, which is schizophrenics. And schizophrenics are the absolute, ask any professional in the medical field, they will tell you schizophrenics are absolutely the most difficult to deal with. When they're medicated, they can be managed. When they're not, they can be extremely violent and unmanageable. And that's what we end up with, with what you see with photographs down here the councilman has. Those are schizophrenics who end up on the street. And also, 2/3 of your homeless population that suffers from mental illness is also significant substance abusers. They use alcohol and/or drugs, combinations, and they're very, very difficult for us to manage in law enforcement. So the nature of the problem in Inglewood, so you know what we're dealing with and we have few, we have few tools in the law. We can take people to, we can confine people to mental institutions against their will for treatment only when they're gravely disabled or a danger to the self or others. Self or others, I apologize. That's a very high burden. That means I'm going to kill myself, they're threatening others with violence, they're... But those who are surviving on the streets and sleeping on the sidewalks, even though we know that's a danger to them ultimately in the long run, that doesn't meet the criteria under the law for us to take them against their will to a county-run psychiatric treatment facility. So it's a very high burden. So we walk between the raindrops, if you will, trying to help and mitigate these issues. So as the nature of the problem in Inglewood, if you accept that the majority of folks that you see, these homeless transit types, are drug and/or alcohol involved and they are mentally ill, the nature of the problem in Inglewood is fairly contained in that they're usually panhandlers or trespassers. If you go to Seattle, Washington as an example, you have a very young population. Runaways, Hollywood in the city of Los Angeles has a lot of runaways, young males and females. Not so much in Inglewood. Confined to panhandlers and trespassers. Public intoxication is a problem with that population. And then we have some property and then some violent crime. Not so much. Mostly property crime offenders, some of these are. But generally speaking, they're not particularly violent. But generally speaking, they're not particularly violent, and their crimes are limited to property, and mostly nuisance in nature. So, you're those ones you're going to see panhandling at the liquor store, at the 7-Eleven. And some of them are aggressive, and you need to call us. I mean, that's the bottom line. I get a lot of emails and I get a lot of voicemails on the weekends. And inevitably, it's Lieutenant Freed, we've got a, there's a guy out here, he's aggressively panhandling at the 7-Eleven. I'm not there on that particular day, you need to call Communications Division and have them send a radio car out. That's an immediate response. Somebody defecating or urinating in public, somebody consuming an open alcoholic beverage, that's something you should call the Police Communication Center. And I put that on here, those numbers are on here. And of course, if it's an emergency, you always call 911. And then there's the non-emergency number for the Police Dispatch Center, it's a 24-hour operation. They will create an incident, they will send a unit out, and we will deal with that. We can't have these nuisance crimes in public, it creates blight, it's unsafe for the public. When you see this, we need to deal with it. We have some penal code sections that allow us to deal with aggressive panhandlers. For example, if they're interfering with the business, we deal with that. There's a particular penal code section, there's a trespassing sections in the law that allows us to tell them to leave if the business wants them gone, we warn them, and if they don't leave, then we take appropriate action, usually results in their arrest. And we've had pretty good success with that. We do need the public to call us. Because they'll very oftentimes call the councilman's office, which is fine, but he's not going to come out and take somebody out of the way of the 7-Eleven, or get them, make a move, or deal with somebody. I mean, I know he's probably willing, but he's not going to roll out at 2:00 in the morning and take the intoxicated transient out of the way. We are. So, again, I put the numbers on here for you to have. So, that's the nature of the problem. Some of the examples down here, these photographs, oh, it's up. We clean this stuff up. When you abandon shopping carts, we can deal with, abandon properties, and this is the trespassers and the panhandlers, they collect garbage. They collect shopping carts, and they collect, this is their possessions. And they, remember, you're talking about people that are, they're not, you and I, you and I would not want to be, we would not think sleeping on the street is a normal thing to do. But they're not all there. They're not taking medication, they hear voices, they prefer isolation, these are folks who are, and we feel for them, our hearts go out to them. But as an example, there's a woman here with the shopping carts. I got a phone call, a couple different phone calls, one from the councilman. I sent a unit out there to talk to her at about 11 o'clock at night, that we've had some information that she may have wanted help. If a transient-type homeless person wants to be off the street, we can get them off the street. They don't want to get off the street, unfortunately. They don't know that they want to be off the street. Does that make sense? This is our problem. I can get, we have resources, nonprofits, outreach centers, we can call and get a bed, we can call and get them a shower, we can get them food. If they don't want to be homeless, they're not homeless if they want help. The problem, they have to follow some rules. They can't consume alcohol and drugs, they can't fight, they can't gamble, they have to follow some of the rules. And frankly, some of these folks are counterculture, they don't want to follow those rules. Again, with the mental illness and the drug involvement, they're not capable of doing it. So, we have to manage it, we just depend on the public to help us. Keep in mind what our limitations are under the law, what we can do. I've sort of talked about the mental health component. We will take action on crimes that we see that are in progress, and we will do our best to move these folks. But keep in mind, if we have a transient who's sleeping on the sidewalk, or a homeless person, or they're defecating in your front yard, when we get out there, we can move them along, but taking them to jail is almost an impossibility. We take them to the municipal jail, they have medical issues, they act out, they might try to hurt themselves pretty soon, we're consuming resources, there's a significant amount of city liability. We will always take action, the question is, what? And what can we do? It's an individual situation. We will look at each individual situation and try to react the best we can. But we'll never hang up on you, and we'll always come out. So, please call us, and I need to know these things when you're having a significant problem in the neighborhood. And like I said, I work with the councilman's office on a regular basis, so please, if you're going to let him know about a problem, let me. Yes, thank you. Thank you, sir.
So, to move forward, I do want to identify that the issues of life, have to do, whatever you do in life, you're all going to be having a need with water. You take it for granted, every time you grab the handle to turn on the faucet, that the water's going to be there. You also take it for granted that the quality of water you're going to consume is going to be there. But with the drought and issues we're dealing with today, that's not necessarily the case. Here to talk a little bit more about it, and the urgency need that you play a role in this, of trying to preserve our resources, please help to recognize our West Basin Municipal Water District Board Member Gloria Gray.
It's a still morning, good morning, I believe. Hi. First of all, it's a pleasure to be here and to speak before you this morning. I want to thank Councilman Franklin for his insight in terms of putting this item on his town hall meeting. It's a very important issue. I also want to say, I want to second what the Congresswoman said. Councilman Franklin is known for town hall meeting. Every time I look at my email, every three months, he has a town hall meeting, and they're all very important issues. So, I applaud you for that, for bringing these important issues to the city. A couple of weeks ago, just briefly, I attended a conference, Independent Cities Conference, and it includes elected officials throughout Southern California. And Councilman Franklin was there, in fact, he was the only one, I think, that was there from Inglewood. But there were such interesting topics, and some of the things I see on your agenda today, he brought back to this community. So, you really need to applaud him, because he really is out there searching for issues that impact you, so let's give him another round of applause. I also just want to briefly acknowledge, I mean, I've lived here for over 30 years, I'm so excited about what's happening with this city right now, and I want to applaud one of our new partners, Madison Square Garden, thank you for being here. Of course, Hollywood Park has been here forever, so we just appreciate the partnership that we have in this city, so that's a good thing. My topic is water, and certainly all the other topics before me were very important, but Councilman really said something that's key to all of us, because water, we have to have water to exist, and we just really don't think about it. We don't think about the reliability of it, we don't think about the quality, we just think it will come out of our faucets. Well, I'm going to briefly just kind of set the picture, if you will, in terms of where our water comes from, and what West Basin is doing to ensure that, which our mission, which our mission is to ensure that there's water reliability for its community that it serves, and also that it's brought to you with value. I'm going to start with Metropolitan Water District. How many of you know about Metropolitan Water District in here, anyone? Well, that's the large water agency in Southern California that provides water, imported water to all the counties, including San Diego. It provides water to about 19 million people. So, it's a very large water agency. It has an organization where there are member agencies that are part of Metropolitan Water District, and West Basin is one of their member agencies. So, Metropolitan Water District is a large water agency, and where it gets its imported water is from Northern California. Whoever heard of the Delta? All right, well, that's where the water comes from, from Northern California, from the State Water Project, which is at the very end. Also, Metropolitan gets its water from the Colorado River Aqueduct. That's the other main source of water that comes into Metropolitan Water District. West Basin, as I mentioned, West Basin Water District is one of about 30 several member agencies, water district, that buys imported water from Metropolitan. And so, West Basin has a service area of about 1 million people, and I represent District Two, which includes Inglewood. So, you all elected me to serve on this board. And so, in the West Basin service area, there are about a million people, but there are five directors, and we have, each have 200,000 approximately constituents. And so, West Basin has always been concerned about water reliability and value, not just providing water, but value, the things that we can do to make sure that we provide water as economically as we can. And so, we're a wholesaler of water, West Basin sells water, we don't provide direct water to residents. We sell to about 17 cities. Inglewood is one of the cities that buys water from West Basin. And so, what that means is that the water that you get at your home is part of West Basin's water, part of the portfolio, and there's other groundwater and other things that the City of Inglewood Water Department mixes with their water to send to you. But West Basin does sell water to the City of Inglewood. And so, one of the things that we have always been concerned about is making sure that we have a reliable water supply. And so, some of the things that West Basin has done is looking forward, and I again applaud you for looking at future water opportunities, because it's so important to talk about not only what's happening now, but looking at it in the future, is that West Basin, again, has always been concerned about water reliability. So, it's developed a program called WR, Water Reliability 2020. And part of that program, which will be explained in more detail later by Mr. Wilderforth from West Basin, has to do with making sure that we focus on local resources, that we have control. Because imported water, as Councilman said, we don't have a lot of control on that. I also serve on the State Water Commission, which deals with the Delta. And so, drought, the climate, all kinds of things are impacting the water that we're getting from up north. And so, West Basin is focusing on developing local resources, and some of those local resources would be water conservation. Some of you may have participated in our high-efficiency toilet program. How many of you have gotten high-efficiency toilets, will help you save on your water. We provided an irrigation system for your lawn that will help you save water. It's a new system this year that we're going to provide. It really kind of, if you have your sprinkler system on and it rains, it actually turns it off. So, it's a very smart controller, but it's a new system this year. And we have other programs that we offer to residents. One of the other things that we do in terms of our water portfolio, not only do we get imported water, but we use recycling water. We have a plant in El Segundo called Etsy Little Water Recycling Plant. Some of you may have been there, and what it does, it recycles water, and it has about 200 customers, it provides recycled water to about 200 customers. And Inglewood uses it for its street cleaning program. And also, we provide recycled waters to parks and other areas where you don't have to use drinking water, because imported water is drinking water, that's what we drink. The other thing that we're doing, we're looking at ocean desalination. And I don't know if you all know about ocean desalination, because what it does is it goes through a system that will create drinking water, that's what we're exploring right now. We have an ocean desalination demonstration plant that's located in Redondo Beach. We also have a water education program that's located in Redondo Beach. We have tours, many of our students in the school system here have been there, many groups, we're happy to host groups to come there to learn about recycled water. So, those are some of the things that we're doing. I just want to give you a few statistics which tells you, which kind of puts water in perspective. West Basin creates recycled water, it's about 30 million gallons a day. Our imported water supply, we have at least, for one year, our imported water supply will fill up the Rose Bowl 850 times. One year's supply of imported water will fill up the Rose Bowl 850 times. I think that's very significant. So, that West Basin really provides a large imported water supply. But we are doing things that will look at local resources, and as I said, we will talk about that in more detail. I do want to mention a couple of things, invite all of you to it. Because I serve as vice chair in the Metropolitan Water District and also all the directors, we have trips that will take you up north, to really see the system, the water system, the Delta, and so forth. I think Alicia has been on some of the trips. We have a trip that will take you to the Colorado River Aqueduct. These are all free trips, and if you're really interested in learning about the water that comes down here to Southern California, I really encourage you to do that. I will give you my website, so you can, West Basin website too, you can make the contact, it's www.westbasen.org. We also, as I said, provide tours to our water recycling plant, as well as the ocean desalination plant. One other thing I want to invite you to, there's a program each year that we do called Water Harvest, and certainly the councilman has been there. It's really a great event. It's held in El Segundo at our water recycling plant. It's a family event, it's a free event, we provide food, and we have games and all kinds of things, and prizes for folks who attend. And we do have folks from Inglewood, and so I'm always happy to see more and more come out. So, I wanted to give you some kind of a feeling in terms of where our water supply comes from, and I'm going to introduce you to Ron Wilderforth, who is our Communications Manager. Andy will go into more detail in terms of future water supplies. Thank you.
I'm going to be really quick, but Gloria gave you the good news, I'm going to give you the bad news, okay? We have little water here locally, right? We depend on water hundreds of miles away from Northern California, who hates giving it to us, and Colorado River, where seven states depend on that river. It's one of the only rivers in the world where no water goes to the ocean. As we look ahead, we see more and more scarcity. Scarcity globally, scarcity in the eastern United States, they're having the problems we've had for 20 years. And what I need to tell you today is, West Basin's going to protect us. Tomorrow, Northern California water could be shut off for two years if there's an earthquake in Northern California at the Bay Delta. Could happen tomorrow. Right now, 30% of the time, we can't send water down here in order to protect the environment up there. Colorado River water, our other major source, two studies have been done. One says that the major river on the Colorado River will never be full again. Las Vegas is actually building another tunnel to get water out of Lake Mead because they're afraid it's going to be high and dry in the future. Another study says the Colorado River system's going to be the next 1930's Dust Bowl. Not good news. So, what West Basin is doing is going to grow our water locally. As Gloria mentioned, we're going to double our recycling program. We have the most unique water recycling program in the world. We can take sewer water, or wastewater, whichever you prefer, and we make five different types of water. We make irrigation water, we make high-pressure boiler feed water, we make low-pressure boiler feed water, we make cooling tower water, and we make indirect drinking water. We can take any water, and in 20 minutes, we can make it better and safer than Aquafina, DeSante, and Sparklets. If you don't believe me, come to my plant, and I will show you how you do it, and I will let you taste that water. Got a rise out of them, didn't I? I will. I've been drinking it for 15 years. Of course, I'm 26 years old and had black hair. The other thing we do is conservation. We want to encourage you to take a little bit of your lawn, take the grass away and put native plants. If you put native plants in instead of grass, once you get those plants established, you never have to water that place again, ever, because it's made to last on 15 inches of rain. And finally, ocean water desalination. We've been doing some remarkable research on how you take saltwater and make it fresh water, and how do you protect the ocean in doing that process? So, we're looking to the future, we're going to make sure you have water, but we're working hard to do it. With that, sir?
All right, so you now hear the crisis about water. So, we're trying to come out ways to make sure we have enough quality water in your households for your everyday use. And that next step now means we need to talk about cleanups. And in order to talk about cleanups, we have our waste hauling company that has now come forward, has been with us about a year, and I thought it was fair and fitting that they give a report, just like you had me when I was elected. I want a 100-day report card, what have you done? So, I think it's fair and fitting that we now reach out to the waste haulers, since they now have about a year under their belt, to talk to us about the cleanups and what they're doing throughout the city. So, here... So here, please help me welcome Mr. Jay Fowler and Don Harris from Consolidated Disposals.
Thank you, Councilman Franklin, I really appreciate the opportunity to, uh, attend your, uh, your town hall and to, uh, give an update about, uh, one year of servicing the city of Inglewood. Um, I'm Jay Fowler, I'm the General Manager, and with me is Don Harris. Oh, thank you. And Sam Har- uh, Sam Pena is also our, um, Senior Municipal Manager. Um, we have been servicing the city of Ingle for, for a year. One of the things I want to acknowledge is the people that do this day in and day out. We have, uh, 16 drivers that go out into the city each and every day, and they are led by a supervisor, um, Gilbert Alvarado is our, uh, dedicated supervisor, that he's out there to ensure that the collections are being made, um, safely and effectively each and every day. These are the, these are the people that make this happen and, uh, really get the job done. So, um, we wanted just to review what we've done in a year. Um, and, uh, Don, can you just give us a little bit of update of what we've collected, uh, in the last 12 months?
Well, sure, I will, Jay. I just wanted to share some fun facts about trash with you this morning. Um, I don't know how much it takes to fill up the Rose Bowl, but we have, in the past year, picked up, uh, 409,000 pounds of trash, 18,000 pounds of recycling, 15,000 pounds of green waste, and as many as 20, 25 requests a day for large items to be removed.
When Councilman Franklin talks about quality of life, one of the things that was brought to our attention very early on, and Mayor Butts spoke to it, is the abandoned items, um, sofas, mattresses, refrigerators, that people may, uh, end up abandoning in alleyways. Um, and also the need for residents to clean out their garage and the likes. We refer to these as bulky items. So one of the other areas that we've really, uh, focused on is the collection of, um, abandoned items. And we, in addition to this service, we also highly engaged in the community of Inglewood, in, um, organizations, and, um, also just with the city events. And, Don, can you take us through some of those?
Sure, I will, Jay. This is the fun part for Sam and me, where we get to participate with the community and be involved and engaged. And we support block club meetings, thank you very much. Uh, we are active in the Chamber of Commerce. We were able to participate just a week or so ago in a fundraising, um, golf tournament. And, uh, Sam was on one of the winning teams. Uh, we... So, but we are also, um, members of the Lions Club, we're involved with Salvation Army. Um, we support, uh, Inglewood businesses, local businesses, by purchasing goods and services from them. We, um, run composting workshops, we support Earth Day, um, uh, we actually provide, um, shred services locally. We, and also we have a recycle reward program where, uh, we've had 112 residents so far to sign up for, um, program, uh, contest, if you want to call it that, where you can win prizes for recycling.
So we actually have a program to reward recycling in our, in our community?
We do. Uh, there's a contest, and all you need to do really is to call in and sign up, and then we will, um, get your name in the, uh, on the list. And if your neighborhood or your zone, um, recycles the most, um, items by weight, then at the end of the quarter, then you can win a prize. And recently, we had 25 winners for the last quarter, and, uh, the winners were able to have a, um, In-N-Out Burger lunch.
My favorite, uh, double double. So, one, one of the areas also that, um, we, we serve in, and it's been a, it's been an ongoing tradition within the, the city of Inglewood, is our Operation Clean Sweep. So this is a service that we offer, uh, to the residents twice a year. In addition to free bulky pickups that, uh, residents can call in for, um, this is an event that we, uh, we lay out a schedule for five consecutive Saturdays where people can clean out the garages, clean out, uh, what have you, non-hazardous items, large items, small items, and bring it out to the street on, on a Saturday. And then we will come through and we will, uh, pick all those up. So we just completed that one last May?
We did, in May. Um, we were able to actually collect 192 tons, or 384,000 pounds, of bulk items, mainly furniture and appliances like that. Um, we were, the residents, it appears, are very familiar with the program, and based on the calls and, uh, that we get into the office, we can tell that a lot of residents use the, um, biannual program to schedule their cleanups or, or home improvement projects, because they know that it's coming up, ready to rock and roll. Eight o'clock, we hit the streets, and by one o'clock, it's done. So it's been very successful.
So how do I know what day, what Saturday to bring my bulky items out to the streets?
Sure, I will, Jay. The, um, the Clean Sweep pickup days are aligned with your regular service day, so that if your service day for garbage collection is on Monday, then the first Saturday of that month will be your pickup for large items. And if your service day is Tuesday, then the second Saturday, and so on and so forth. And we will notify you about the dates by...
Oh, our reci- I'm sorry, that was my cue. Our Recycle Today newsletter that goes out, um, to each of the residents and businesses, um, really has, uh, information about these events, but also will have topical issues as far as recycling.
And the residents are notified in their municipal bill. So we have, these events are in May and in October, so you'll see that coming in your fall municipal bill, and then on your fall newsletter.
Excellent. Um, one area also of concern for, for people is the advent of, uh, identity theft. And, um, so the concern sometimes of putting information out, uh, for collection that has, uh, sensitive information that people might use for, uh, identity theft. So one of the things that we've also organized within the city is a shred event, and, uh, can you tell us a little bit about that, Don?
Yes, I will. Thank you very much. We, um, at the local office, that's at 110 South La Brea, we do have shredding services there. We have either where you can come in and we will shred for you small documents or a couple of documents here and there, or you can drop your documents off in a locked container, which is dumped and shredded every Friday. Uh, four times a year, though, we offer shred services, and it's kind of a drive-through scenario, and we partner up with an event that's happening in the city. For instance, um, I believe it was in April, where we, the, um, Citywide Yard Sale. So in conjunction with that, while that was going on, we had the shred truck come along, and then we had the residents would line up, we go out with the cart, we take the, uh, documents out of the car for you, put them in the cart, and then dump them in the truck. The truck will shred it on sight, you don't even need to get out of your car. It was really, it was really cool.
You can even actually watch your documents get shredded, if that's of interest to you. There's a window in the truck that you can actually watch the process.
You know, something interesting, Inglewood residents were ready for this, because in April, we had, uh, we collected 17,000 pounds of paper for shredding. It was so much that we filled up a truck and a half. And, uh, by shredding, and not only did you keep your personal information safe, but when you shredded, the city of Inglewood residents, here's something, you saved 144 trees, you saved 59,000 gallons of water, uh, 1,400 gallons of oil, 35,000 kilowatt hours of energy, and then by shredding, you helped keep 510 pounds of air pollution out of the atmosphere.
Because all this material is then recycled and, and used to, to make, uh, paper products from that point.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, so, again, um, one other area that we're involved in the city of Inglewood is employment opportunities. Um, we have an office, uh, located across the street from the, uh, from the city hall, and we also have a kiosk there that people can apply online. Um, we also encourage people to go to our website, republicservices.com, and there is also an employment page there that people can, um, click on and get information of, as far as the employment opportunities at Republic.
And with that, we just want to thank you. One thing that we did want to mention is that we provide, uh, recycling assemblies to the schools in the district. And so if you have a desire, or if you are affiliated with a school that would like to have us come and do a recycling assembly, if you could please just let us know, we'd be more than happy to come out and demonstrate and do a program for your kids.
Yes. Questions?
Okay, come to you. Hold on, hold on, got a radio mic, hold on.
Is there additional cost for the shredding service?
No. There is no additional cost for the shredding service.
We have a problem with people coming on our block. We put our trash cans out, uh, at night, and when we get up in the morning, go to work, we notice that we've been really vandalized. Uh, notice in the affluent areas, they have locked containers. Those containers open once they're dumped. When do you think you'll be offering that sort of, sort of service?
If at all, yes.
Currently, we, thank you. Currently, we offer locked containers where the commercial bins only. Um, we have looked at, um, the residential carts, and they're a little bit problematic. They haven't really been, uh, trued out as far as being dependable. Um, what we do work, is scavenging is, is kind of what we refer to it as, and we work, um, closely with the city to try to mitigate this issue. Um, we work with code enforcement, code enforcement, uh, there's, uh, two officers in code enforcement that we partner with, and they're, they're actually, uh, looking at adding a third. Um, and one of the things that we do is we change our route times, so we actually, um, start in different areas, so we kind of throw off that, uh, that scheduling. Um, there is also a scavenging hotline, um, that you might note, it's, uh, 310-412-8622. And that's a, uh, city number. Um, and they're actually looking at changing up some of the schedules as far as the, uh, the code enforcement folks to get out there at different hours to be able to, uh, effectively enforce the ordinance that prevents them from scavenging.
Wait back, I gotta get the mic, hold on. I see you, Herve. Let me get the lady first, and then I'll come back to you.
Yes, on, on your instructional sheet, the one that you have, how to pack your, your disposable items, it said to put your small batteries, like your cameras, your cell phones, in a plastic bag on top of the container, and that it would be recycled that way, instead of putting it inside. Well, I find that the day after, they're down, because the automatic lift takes the thing and dumps it without somebody taking those batteries off the top of the container.
Okay. They, they're actually, um, the way the trucks are designed, um, they are actually forward-looking to where they should be able to see that there is a, a bag of batteries on there. And we'll make sure that we're talking to our employees about looking for those specifically. There's also drop-off containers at our, um, at our office, and also at city hall for batteries as well.
Good morning.
In my neighborhood, at, um, our street sign says from, uh, no parking from eight o'clock to two o'clock. However, the trash pickup comes at seven o'clock. So that causes a little problem, uh, and I don't know if that's a point that the city needs to change the s- sign, or, or if they should come a little later. Because I know by the time I, I go walk every morning, by the time I get home, if I've forgotten, because I used to say, well, eight o'clock. Well, if I get home at 10 minutes to eight or something, they've already gone, all three of them have already passed. So that's a concern, uh, in the Century Heights, uh, neighborhood, anyway.
As far as what time the collections start?
Oh, sometime, uh, 7:30 or earlier.
Right. The, yeah, the, 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 the contract states, the, the residential collections will start at seven o'clock, and those are somewhat independent as far as the, the, uh, the street signs, so I, I recognize that issue. Wh- what we do is, we actually have two people in the truck to be able to position the carts around parked cars during those hours.
The other thing is that there seems to be, um, different neighborhoods, uh, different concepts of where to put the trash cans, and if you put the trash cans in the street, then the street doesn't get swept. And some people have seemed not to want to put them on their lawn, or, I don't know exactly what it is, but, so, um, half the street where the people put the trash cans in the street doesn't get swept, and the other part, uh, it does get swept, where they put their trash cans on the lawn.
Okay, that's a public workup matter, I will address that as a city. Uh, there is a item I didn't hear you address, and it has to do with those residents such as myself, that actually am a do-it-yourselfer. Yes, I, my honey-do list does require that I have to do house painting. And so as a consequence, I have painted cans, or times when my friends and I meet together, we decide to change all of our vehicles, so now what do I do with that oil? And then also, because of technology nowadays, I have a tendency of trying to keep up with the technology of the latest features, such as computers and monitors and other electronic equipment, how are they disposed?
Um, let's tackle the e-waste as the first, so any, uh, printers or computers. Um, those can be called in, it's part of the bulky service, that we would, uh, we would, uh, collect those with non-compaction, and then we actually use a company that, uh, disassembles them and, uh, and, and recycles the components.
Okay, and the motor oil?
The motor oil and, um, oil, oil-based paint is considered a household hazardous waste. Um, there are, um, county, um, um, collection sites, uh, within LA County, um, that you can find from their Public Works page to be able to drop those off. Water-based paint, um, is, uh, non-hazardous and can be collected. What we would ask is that you would actually take the lid off, let it dry out first, and then dispose of it at that point.
I didn't quite understand the motor oil, so, uh, we used to be able to get, uh, reu- uh, containers from the waste haulers, so that we, when we drained the oil out of our vehicles, then it could be properly be taken to a location for disposal. Is that available?
Uh, we don't have those containers, but we will collect it from you at the curb. Um, in speaking with the, uh, Environmental Services Team, they did let us, uh, know as a reminder that milk jugs are, are, um, perfectly acceptable.
Okay, one more question, and we need to move on to our next presenter.
Um, not necessary is that question. I, I am a homeowner of 25 years in District Four. This is excellent this year, I just want to have a positive compliment, that was always pick up on time, and then the holiday, and just want to thank you.
All right, let's give our responses.
Thank you.
Our presenters a hand, please. Okay, as I... As you heard the mayor mention earlier, we've had a significant challenge with the, uh, working with the Faithful Central Bible Church, they had a, a profit arm known as the, the Forum Enterprise, that was instrumental on making a transition for sale, the Madison Square Gardens, the Forum. And with that in mind, there was, uh, app- opposition and concerns of quality of life issues and job opportunities for local hire. At this time, I'd like to re- reach out to my new friend, who has come helped me repeatedly for the Miracle Manchester and other activities, Mr. Nick Spampatano, uh, from Madison Square Gardens, and also is, is Jason Lombard from Madison Square Gardens, he come in as well. Thank you. Just give him a hand.
Uh, I'm Nick Spampatano, I'm the, excuse me, Vice President, General Manager of the Forum. Uh, MSG is very excited to have add, add the Forum to our list of properties. Um, we see a ton of potential, we see what, what's going on in the area. It's a great time to be in Inglewood, frankly. Um, I'm happy to say that we're ahead of schedule on construction, and I know we're running a little late, so I'm not going to go on, but I'll tell just one quick story about Councilman Franklin, if you know Councilman Franklin, and I want to acknowledge him and the mayor and the council for helping us get this deal through. But when we did the Miracle on Manchester, uh, I hadn't... But when we did the Miracle on Manchester, I hadn't seen him other than at council meetings. And I went over and I said, "Councilman Franklin, I'm Nick Spampitano from MSG." He said, "All right, great, that truck needs to be unloaded." So, I got up in the truck and we unloaded turkeys all day. So that was my first experience with Councilman Franklin. But, that being said, once again, we're very excited to be here. I can't wait. The buzz in the industry about this building opening, everybody wants to play there. There's going to be much more news coming very shortly, so keep your ears open. And with that, here's Jason Lombard. He's our Workforce Outreach Coordinator.
Thank you, Nick. What Nick doesn't want to tell you is that he's actually our own personal rock star at the Forum. You know, that's, that story that he told about Councilman Franklin is kind of an experience that you'll experience when you deal with everybody from Madison Square Garden. You know, community-wise, it makes my job easy. My name is Jason Lombard, I'm the Workforce Outreach Coordinator. What does that mean? That means that I get to work with you, community-wise. It's always nice to be able to come to a town hall, look around and see all the community members, and then also see people that I've already spoken to. What does that mean? That means that we're out in the community, that means we're out, and we're trying to make sure that you have the information about the project, that you have the information directly from Madison Square Garden. You don't hear it from someone else, you hear it straight from us. So if there are opportunities going forward that you want us to come out and speak to your group, we're more than willing to do that, and we're eager to do that. Talk about where we've come from. Where we've come from is, you know, I think everybody in this room has a story about the Forum. The Forum is a place that everybody has feelings about, they feel like it's not only a venue, it's not only an arena, but it's a place where they had memories. What are we trying to do? We're trying to create more of those memories. With the Endeavor, the Endeavor coming through, Shuttle Endeavor coming through, and the agreement between Madison Square Garden with Mayor Butts, you know, that was the start of it. What's happened from there is the agreement that Assemblymember Bradford spoke to, to make sure that there's prevailing wage on this project. That's in agreement between the city of Inglewood and also Madison Square Garden. Construction-wise, we're right in the middle of our construction. If you look at the site right now, the site has a fence around it from Clark Construction. Clark is our general contractor on the site. They've been working pretty diligently to make sure that there's some, some local involvement on, on the project. We have during construction around 300, a little bit over 300 full-time jobs that will be, that will be available for the construction portion of the project. And then once the project is completed, we'll have around 260 full-time jobs during the operation phase of the project. In addition to that, Madison Square Garden has made a $50 million commitment to the Forum, and to the city of Inglewood. What does that mean? That means that this will be a 21st century venue. That means that when you, when you look at other places in the city of Los Angeles and surrounding, the venues that you're looking at that are 21st century, and places where you would go to see a high-level concert, an award show, this will, that's what the Forum is going to be. There's been, in, on the inside, all of the seats are gone right now. So if you walked in there, you know, the seats are all cleared out. And then there's a center ring that's actually been put into the center to make sure that weight-wise, there was a restriction that the Forum had before that other places didn't have. That meant that award shows and certain concerts weren't able to be housed there. With the center ring, we'll be able to house all of the ones that you see going around right now. Chick Hearn used to say that their seating-wise, it was 17,505. You know, we'll be at 17,600. But in addition to that, they wanted to make sure that they were able to house some of the smaller things that'll happen. So there's a curtain that can actually be drawn to make it only be about 8,000 seats, so you don't feel like you're in this cavernous venue when there's, it's some of the smaller shows, some of the more intimate shows. Commitment-wise, community, in addition to the commitment that they have for the, Madison Square Garden has for the Forum, there's also going to be a farmer's market that will happen on the Forum site. What does that mean? That means that, you know, the things like the Miracle on Manchester that was spoken to earlier, the farmer's market, they want to be a community partner. They don't want to just have a venue where people look and they say, "Oh, that's where they hold concerts, that's where, you know, Madison Square Garden bought it." No, people want to, you want to, we want to be able to look, have you look to us to come to your different events that you have, your different meetings that you have, and be able to say, "Look, this is, this is an example of what needs to happen when developments happen here in the city of Inglewood." We want to be the catalyst, we want to be the, we are the first big project that's coming, but when you look at things like Hollywood Park being renovated, you look at the light rail, this is an exciting time for the city of Inglewood. In addition to that, I just want to kind of touch on the agreement between the city of Inglewood and the Forum. We're going to have, once operations start, we have a commitment to 35% of the operations jobs will go to local hiring. That means that, that some of the teenagers that were alluded to earlier will be able to have jobs, excuse me, not teenage, the teenagers and then some of the young adults will have job opportunities that they will be able to look to right down the street from where they live, and, and will be able to make sure that, that, once the, once the concerts and everything are happening, this, this is an opportunity for them to be able to have jobs going forward. In addition to that, I just want to make sure that everyone knows, we have a sign-in sheet that we're going to put outside for if you want to have information on the project. We have an operations job fair that's going to be happening, actually in the, in the fall, so we want to make sure that everyone that wants to have information about this project is able to have information about the project, will be able to email, email you, you'll be able to get my information from me, I have, I'll give my card to anyone that would like to have us come and speak to your group. There are a few of them in here that actually have already heard us. Want to say hello to Herve in the back. We've been out to his block club and been able to kind of have conversations with them, and make sure that the concerns that you might have, the questions that you might have, if there's any clarification that you needed, you can get it directly from us. I want to thank Councilman Franklin and the leadership here in Inglewood. I just want to make sure that you know that, leadership-wise, when you look around town hall, this is, this is a town hall, but really this is a meeting of, of community members that come, come out, concerned community members, and, and I think they should definitely be applauded for being able to bring these groups together each and every time.
Before we take questions or comments, and I will recognize you, I want to also make sure I give honor where honor is due. You're seeing now the end product, but not what we went through to make it a reality. There was members on the council as a whole, and I want to stress as a whole, that saw the vision on how we could help stimulate our community back to the glory days of generating enough revenue that we would not have to keep plaguing you as our taxpayers the burden of cost to maintain public service. And it was through that effort, there was an organization that approached me and said, "I have an organization I want you to consider." And this organization is concerning coming from the East Coast to the West Coast, and has never been on the West Coast to have a venue. It is an opportunity that, it's a moment of a lifetime, because you will not always get this kind of acreage available with a venue that already provides state-of-the-art entertainment opportunities. And so I want you to help me recognize the president of the Roberts Group, Christine Roberts. Kristen Roberts. What we've always claimed, that when you're seeking funding from the city, that you also are bound to the terms of paying prevailing wages. And I'm proud to say that those individuals that took out those 17,505 were being compensated more than $25 an hour. So, contrary to what you had heard before, this is a reality. And also to let you know, you heard what Jason said about how he is the one that's responsible to make sure on the Madison Square Garden side, that those that are hired and the subcontractors that are used to provide the labor services, that they're paying the prevailing wages. We as a city of Inglewood also has a compliance officer to make sure that we watch over them to make sure it happens as well. So I just want you to know, this is not just something warm and fuzzy, but this is a reality check, to make sure that when we go up and running the spring of 2014 with concerts, that you'll know that it is done with a lot of thought process, a lot of investment. You heard him mention about $50 million, that's just for the renovation, not for the acquisition, and the ongoing cost is going to have to maintain. And you also heard us talk about that the council majority at that time was able to garner $18 million before the state wanted to take it over to help do the seed money they needed in order to make this deal happen. And then recently, you heard me just announce earlier why it was important to renovate the, the city successor agency property that's currently on Prairie and 102nd, and that area, was because they need off-site parking. And we've made it available that now that will help accommodate those patrons that want to come and utilize the performance that they're going to provide, they'll have the shuttle service that we'll make available to be able to come from those sites as well. This is what we're talking about with the big picture. And again, as I emphasize in this agenda, that being part of the solution and help move the city forward. Now, any other question or comment before we move to the two other presenters we have? One second, I'll bring the mic.
The training, training for these 300, 250 jobs, how is that designed? I'm sure you have a training program in mind. They need education.
Right, so there's, there's the apprenticeship programs that happen through the, the construction portion of it. But then the, on the operations side, yes, it'll include everyone that will be working at the Forum.
So knowing that that thought was going to come up, and it was the will and the body of this, as this group is here, our next presenter will be addressing that issue. Am I on board? All right. One more question, we need, oh, way in the back. Hold on. I'm getting my workout today here, guys. Excuse me.
How you doing? The lots that you guys are going to require for the overflow parking, first of all, I appreciate that that's been cleared, because that's adjacent to my church.
Okay.
So, having said that, will those lots be paved? First of all, because right now they're just filled dirt, will they be paved going forward? And secondly, on the days you do not have events, will they be available for other public use?
So I'll answer that one. The answer to the question is, answer to the question is, according to AQMD, AQMD, they will set the guidelines as to whether or not it has to be an asphalt pavement or some other kind of a covering for the ground. The other comment regarding can the parking, can the spaces be made available for, let's say, public use? And the answer is yes. When the, there's no concerts or any interruptions with the Madison Square Gardens performances, they will make it available to the city, which we then could make it available to for public use as well. Am I there? I'm looking at Nick, give my head. Yeah, I'm right on board. Okay. One more question, we really need to move on.
Hi. I was interested in knowing if there was going to be any other property or area besides the Forum that Madison Square Garden was going to, you know, develop? Because that's what I was under the impression, that there was going to be more property used in that area, because it is a little depleted and on Prairie. And we were hoping that that would develop, that would make that property a lot more desirable looking?
I know, I mean, what, my, the answer to that question would be that we want to be the catalyst for everything that's going to be around us. But the plans right now are for the Forum property, so you'll see that the repaving of the, the parking lot will start to happen in the next couple of weeks and things like that. But as far as acquiring land that's to develop right around the Forum, no, that's, that's the only.
Well, let me interject, if you don't mind.
Okay.
And Nick, I'll look at Nick to see if he, if I get the head bobbed, I know I'm okay. Actually, what the city did, in order for the Madison Square Gardens to utilize the city or successor agency property for parking uses, it also with the understanding that they could purchase the property for prospective development as well. So, answer your question is yes. There is, we are looking at the possibility, but we're taking care of the priority, what is first to us, and that is getting Madison Square Gardens off on their feet. And the holdup was, there was not adequate onsite parking at the Forum, and therefore we needed to find location for long-term use until they were able to get necessary parking that they need. But if they're unable to do that, then they may also acquire that property for development as well. That is near the intersection of Prairie and Century. In this case, the northwest corner next to Taco Bell, the liquor store, the laundromat, that will be part of the parking. Part of the parking would be off of Prairie on the west side, between 101st and 102nd, and then staying in that same area off 102nd, going toward Dodie, those vacant lots that we just leveled from all those apartments, that will also be part of the parking as well. There's only a small portion that is not available, and think of where the future site, they had a big sign back in the days that said, "The future site of, of the police department," that is not part of their development. That is what the city's going to be using for future developments ourselves. Okay? All right. One more comment, or question, and then we really need to move on.
I'm sure Madison Square Gardens will know how to fill up the seats. Okay? So, that's where I, I'm in. So what I wanted to know from you is, are you the individual? Is your ad agency taking care of this? Who would I speak to, to assist in getting Butts into seats?
So to touch on that a little bit, the, the good thing about this is that, you know, Madison Square Garden itself has gone through a significant redevelopment, and there are a lot of people that, artist-wise, want to be able to play Madison Square Garden. In addition to that, Madison Square Garden owns the Fuse Network, so there's, there's also relationships there. So, why I say that is because what will happen is, you know, they'll be able to incorporate when there are artists that want to play the Garden in New York, this is their West Coast home right now, so they'll be able to incorporate within that contract playing the West Coast, the Forum, playing the Forum on the West Coast. Now, in addition to that, I can take your information, and I can be that, that, I can, I can definitely take that and be able to assist you in communicating with Madison Square Garden to go forward to make sure that the outreach is there for people to participate in the concerts.
All right, thank you. Let's give him a hand if you would, please.
Thank you very much.
Wow, we're really late. Much. Wow, we're really late. Okay, moving real quickly, we talked about job opportunities, and we also talked about employment opportunities for the youth, or those individuals that do not have this, the current skill set. And one of the things we talked about, whether it is the local jobs that we heard about Madison Square Gardens, but there's another job group that's now in the makeup that I reached out to as well. And this next person's going to talk to you about these preparations for opportunities for these jobs, where paid goods, good wages, prevailing wages, that you need to be made aware of it. We haven't touched on this particular subject matter in detail, that has to do with the Crenshaw LAX line, that we need individuals that are engineers, et cetera, that can do the work of the future trains that's going to come through Inglewood as well. But the person that really is helping us gear up for the two-year build-out, that we need to have experienced people both in, in various trades, is the next gentleman I'm going to bring up here at this point. From the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, which is now the home of the city of Inglewood, please help me welcome Bobby Sears. Bobby?
On behalf of Jan Vogel, our chief executive officer, I want to thank Councilman Franklin and all of you for being here today. I'm going to give you a quick background on the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. How many of you guys have heard of the South Bay Workforce Investment Board? If I show hands. How about the Inglewood One Stop Business and Career Centers? Okay, that's good. That's a good amount of people. All right. The South Bay Workforce Investment Board has been in existence for over 30 years. Started off being administered by the city of Inglewood, then we switched and moved over to the city of Hawthorne, and just like the councilman alluded to earlier, now we are administered by the city of Inglewood again. So we're very happy about that transition. We are, we have nine cities, a nine-city consortium that we represent. So each of these cities, Carson, Sagundo, Gardena, Hawthorne, Hermosa Beach, of course, Inglewood, Longdale, Mahatt Beach, and Redondo Beach, these are all the cities that we represent. We're the job training and development agency for all nine cities. So, to give you some background history- So to give you some background history on the WIB in two thousand, actually, this year we were one of the highest performing WIBs in the state. We were the highest performing WIB in the state. In two thousand twelve, we received the National Association of Workforce Board's Award of Excellence. We were one of three to receive that award. And in fiscal year two thousand eleven, twelve, we served over a hundred and thirty thousand people out of our four locations. And that's not good. That's a lot of people that need help. And that's a combination of self-assisted and staff-assisted, um, job search and job placement. Uh, so we have four locations, one here in Inglewood, one in Hawthorne, one in, um, Lawndale, Gardena, and one in Manhattan Beach. So those are our four locations. Inglewood is our comprehensive center, uh, so it includes everything. We have a resource center where you can go in and use the computers to work on your resume. You can do job searches. We have fax machines. We also have workshops that happen every week. Uh, you can come in and do resume workshops. Uh, you can do expungement workshops. We have an assortment of workshops that we offer and our partners. Uh, so and the Employment Development Department is also one of our partners. Uh, just to give you some specific information on Inglewood. Over the past five years, if you look at these numbers, and some of you may not be able to see them. So the range on this side, you're looking at individuals, um, that have visited our sites. So at the bottom end is ten thousand, the top is eighty thousand. So from two thousand six, we saw forty-four thousand individuals. And in two thousand ten, eleven, we saw over sixty thousand individuals. Um, so clearly, jobs are very important. And, um, one of the reasons I'm here today is to let you guys know that we are partners with Republic Services. Uh, we're partners with Madison Square Garden. Uh, we're partners with West Basin. We have an assortment of programs that we offer. So I listed a few of the job seeker, um, services that are available. Come in and get job services, training, you can look up labor market information. Um, we have career workshops, there's job placement and assistance. So when a person comes in, and all the services are at no cost to you. Um, there are staffing agencies out there that charge you for these services. These services don't cost you a dime. So you guys, if you know someone that needs a job, send them to the One Stop. We're there to help you guys. Um, I talked about the services that are available at our resource center. We also offer services for business employers. So if you guys have recruitment that you need to get done, we will do that recruitment for you. Uh, we've done recruitments for Republic Services. We placed a lot of the job, the guys that are driving those trucks for them now, we placed a lot of those folks for them. We also offer, this Inglewood Teen Center is coming. I know the councilman mentioned that earlier. The teen center, we have one in Inglewood, we're opening one in Hawth, now, we have one in Hawthorne, we're opening one in Inglewood. And this center is going to be in the Inglewood Library on the basement floor. Um, we're going to have a big fundraiser coming up pretty soon to raise money to place all the equipment and everything that's going to go in there. So it's going to have a computer lab where kids can come in and receive after-school homework assistance and tutoring. Um, we also have fun things in their forums. There's Xbox three sixty and PlayStations and Nintendos. Um, and then there's also, we connect with the school districts. Inglewood Unified School District is our partner also. So the services that we offer for kids will include additional training that is connected to the day school training that they receive at Inglewood High School and all the schools in our area. So the services for this, for the teen center are going to be for all the schools, um, in our district. And it starts at thirteen, so you have to be a teenager to attend. And the hours will be from three PM to six PM every day. And there's no charge, everything is free. The kids will also go on site tours, like we've gone to site tours at West Basin. Kids have gone to site tours of Republic Services, um, over at Boeing and all over. So there are a lot of really good services that we offer. Um, as far as training and training programs, um, there is a program that we're offering right now at West LA. If you know someone that is in IT or interested in getting into IT, they should call our Inglewood One Stop. The phone number is three one zero, six eight zero, thirty seven hundred. This program will allow you to receive training to become network certified, um, and Cisco certified. So there's a lot of different certifications that you can get from this course. But you have to have a little bit of IT background, a little bit of IT background because they're going to give you a pre-test with some questions basically to find out what your background is. And if you do, if you have that information, you could take the course. We also offer on-the-job training programs. So this kind of speaks to the question that you asked earlier about training programs. Uh, we've partnered with Clark Construction in the past. And the way the programs work, um, you contact the One Stop and see what training programs are available. Once, uh, you go through the eligibility process, you would enter an on-the-job training program. Those services, um, the fees for those, the salaries for those services are covered by the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, South Bay Workforce Investment Board. So, um, there's no, again, there's no out-of-pocket cost for anybody that's in any of the programs that we offer. Um, and once you complete the on-the-job training program, it's between, uh, you and the employer if they keep you on. It just depends on how well you perform in the program. And the majority, our placement rate, the reason we have the highest, uh, placement rate in the state is because people that go through our programs usually stick. They stay in the job, so we train people very well.
Permanent employment?
Yes, permanent employment with benefits and all the goodies.
All right, let's give Bobby Sears a hand and we'll take a couple, just a couple of questions. Commenter.
I'm so glad to hear about your, uh, the permanent program opportunity. Uh, but I'm a little more concerned about the individuals that can be, uh, staff-ready. For an example, the young man that's eighteen through twenty-five, twenty-six or thirty years old. And they want to, uh, prepare themselves. Maybe, maybe those jobs aren't, aren't available out of the three hundred. And you have so many that will be onboard working alongside of an apprentice or a journeyman. But, but, uh, to have a pool of individuals that can be called upon for any source, whether it's, uh, uh, over at the, uh, recycle location or West Basin or at the, uh, trash pickup, I can't, I can't remember. So these individuals will still be ready no matter where their assignment is or where their opportunity is. But then that's what I'm really asking. Uh, can we have a program that will develop a pool of people so that our young people will have a place to go and they will be job-ready? That's what I'm asking and suggesting, especially in the area of construction.
Yes. Um, one of the things that we just did, we just completed our five-year plan to the state. Um, and within that plan, we had to identify industry clusters that are growing. So manufacturing and construction are growing in our area. Um, so what we planned in our five-year plan is to partner with labor to create job training programs for young people, eighteen to twenty-four, I believe. I may be off one number or two, maybe twenty-three. Um, but through those programs, kids, we will have a healthy pool of kids who are ready to enter into construction. So it'd include labor and some other, um, private industries that, where we can develop these programs for kids. So we are, that is in our plan.
Okay, we need to take question back here.
Good afternoon. In this, um, town where the demographic, um, has the unemployment rate at, that's north of fourteen percent. My question is, I hear you talking about what you're, what you're making available for people in the fourteen, or teenage to twenty-four range. But I don't hear any, um, thing about, uh, permanent positions that offer benefits. So maybe you can speak to that.
Yeah, we actually do offer services for both adult and youth. So, um, forgive me for not mentioning the services for those individuals. If you go to our web, we have a website called I-Train. It's I-train.org. If you visit that website, we have a training provider directory of over two hundred training providers. So it's a combination of schools, um, post-secondary schools, and and through those, through those training providers that are listed on I-Train, anybody, um, can go if you want to become, uh, say you want to become a nurse. You can look at that list, that training provider directory and look at all the nursing schools that are available. Um, and take training to become a certified nurse. Once you complete your training and the training is free, or is at no cost to you, once you complete the training, the job developers that work at our One Stops will help you find full-time employment. That's, that's our job every day, all day, is to get people placed into, to get people gainfully employed. So we, that's what we do every day. Um, and our placement rate is this past year, I mean, our placement rate is around ninety-five percent. So the services are there, we offer great services, just come to the One Stop and get the services.
We also just wanted for a point of clarity, and I see you, Bill, I'm acknowledging. That there was talk about youth opportunities, but be mindful that the residents that, in my quick walk through the meeting session here, they're talking about adults. There are a number of adults that have been displaced, unemployed, that have some skills, but maybe not the necessary skills to get involved into that particular type of employment. So they want to make sure that there's a level of opportunities for those that are over twenty-four, uh, such as some of us, maybe a few younger, years younger than me, but at least the idea that, hey, I lost my job, but I'm not ready to retire, and I still need, still need some gainful employment, is that available?
Yes, it is. And the majority of our services are for adults. We have, we have a very robust youth services program. But our adult services program is compared in the state is, is, is hard to match. We give people jobs. So if you know someone, you're looking for a job, you know someone that's looking for a job, send them to one of our One Stops. If you live in Inglewood, we're right there on the corner, one-ten South La Brea. Um, and we've got, we've got great job developers and great business developers too.
And then the last thing I do want to acknowledge, unless you want to comment, Bill, is that at our last meeting we had in the town hall in May, we actually had our interim state superintendent for Inglewood Unified School District that talked about maybe having to close some campuses. While if the campuses are going to be closed, there's an organization called Our Community Works, and that's Bill Relaford, Bill, raise your hands if people can see you, that has pledged that he will develop and work on construction jobs. So that way, when the issue comes available regarding the Crenshaw Light Rail, we need individuals that have the skills. And so he helps getting those kids and young adults, those unemployed, ready with those kind of skills so that they can go from apprentices to journeymen by him working together with other unions to be able to place some other jobs. Did you want to comment on that?
Thank you very much. This is very short. I work with workforce. And, um, I've been in the attempt to train people since nineteen ninety. I, we drive through our community on all the construction projects you see, the demographic. We are not there. We are not there. I can take Long Beach, Inglewood, Canton, Carson, Linwood, all over. So how do we get information? Where are the schools that are doing this training? The school we had was in Lennox, it's closed. There are training facilities in every other city, east LA area. There's not one in our immediate community today. Where is it? Hands-on training. I know we have classroom training, but where is the hands-on training? Because you can't poison one unless they are capable, have the skills to work. The schools, where are they? Thank you.
And I agree. We've, um, like I said, in our five-year plan, we know that construction and manufacturing are two of the, two of the biggest industries that are growing for us, industry clusters. So in the planning process, we invited labor to come out. So we've had, we had everybody, we had electrical union, we had, you know, painting, we had everybody come out. Yes, sir. I'm sorry? Yes. Right, so what we're doing is we've partnered with those entities to create a training program. So currently, right now, yeah, you can go on I-Train and you can find training in construction, you know, different schools that are on our training provider list, that you could take training right now. Um, but because the industry is growing, this cluster is growing, we've determined that we need to create our own specific programs, specifically for our area, just like you're talking about, um, so that we can help, we can help our nine-city area. So that is, that is what we're doing now.
Okay, and also, and we've got to move on. So also, you have a website that people can go on to say, look, I want to go on the website, whether they can physically do your offices. Is that available? And if so, what is the website?
Yeah, there's, there's two websites you can go to. The first one is, uh, southbay, the number one stop.org. So that'll show you all the services that are available to job seekers and businesses. Um, if you want information specifically about the South Bay WIB, it's SBWIB.org.
And then there's one more, one more section would be covered by Dyke.
Technology.
Yes, sir.
Number one, uh, job openings all over the world. And we don't see that. And I would like to suggest to not only you, but also to the new, uh, Madison Square Garden that some jobs and apprenticeships be made available. And the creative and the entertainment behind the scenes, the lighting, the producers, the camera, all of those jobs. All of the people you see working on the camera right now are community people that came through a training program through the Inglewood Adult School. But getting them jobs, everything is outside of our community, and I think that's what Bill was talking about. We need it here.
Yeah, no, I understand. And we did, and that is another industry that is growing, it's another industry cluster that's growing. So one of the partners that we met with was, uh, we met with KJLH, was one of the, one of the entities that we reached out to to talk about entertainment industry and creating programs around that too. So yes, we are, that is one of our industry clusters.
And so that was one of the reasons why Bobby is with us to also echo that he has good rapport with labor. Because although he may not have a working facility that he could do all the training collectively, but he could, he could provide it at their facility, such as Ayatsi, who does the stagehand group, or IBW Local Eleven, which is just down the street, that has their electrical classes they can provide as well. Okay, let's give Bobby Sears a hand if you would please. I know it's extra late, I thank you for your indulgence, but some of you have been waiting a long time to hear about this. And so we need to bring you up to speed. You heard the mayor talk earlier with reference to the need for residential sound insulation program and how it's been dormant. Now it's now activated. But I was taken back when I heard from the director of the Residential Sound Installation Department that our residents are becoming our worst enemies because they have the opportunity and they refuse or not acknowledge it, and they even want to take advantage of it. And yet, there's other individuals such as the square block or the inner block that says, I want my house done. Well, but your neighbor next door to you has said, well, I'm not going to worry about it. And so as a consequence, until they're taken care of, we can't go to the square block. So I think it's critical that you get an input on this. And I see several block club captains in the audience, and that I know you have residents on your block that have not responded to the letters that we just recently sent out. So to help address this issue, I asked staff to bring me an expert, and we do have such an expert. Please help me welcome and recognize Betty Griffith. Betty?
Good afternoon, everyone. Well, I don't know, this is, I know you guys have been waiting a long time. And did they save the worst for last or the best for last? We'll see. The best? Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank you, Councilman Franklin, for having us come out. This is something very dear and near to me. I've been a resident of the city of Inglewood for almost thirty years. I've worked for the city of Inglewood eleven years exclusively in RSI. So, um, on two fronts, I want to thank Mayor Fudds as well as the council, um, members in reactivating RSI, if you will. I can handle this a little better, I won't have to strain. Okay, as it's been alluded to today, that the program has had some trouble. So I'd just like to first say thank you to all of you who have been waiting patiently. I probably have spoken to many of you. I probably have spoken to many of you a few times about when, when, when. And now you've kind of had the story of why I haven't been able, or the department hasn't been able to give you an exact answer of when. So we had some trouble, we fell down. But when I were back up, we got pulled up with the help of the mayor, help of Councilman, Congresswoman Waters, the council, and actually the help of you for being patient. But we are pulled up, we are activated again. We have some money put back into the pipeline so that we can actually do the work. My role at the department is to do outreach. So when we got the go-ahead, and we are mandated to get these units done, for me, because I just told you I'm a resident of Inglewood, it's important to me that we get the benefit of this program. It's a wonderful program. So when we got back up, we decided, what can we do to expedite the process? Because we've been dormant for a few years. We've been just really kind of breathing off a few fumes of money. So you may have seen some activity going on out in the field, but it wasn't any new activity, it was something that was already in the pipeline. So now that we have some money coming in, we've got a mandate for two fronts. One, we must get all these homes completed at least by two thousand and fifteen. If we do not, they're changing the contour maps and some homes will not be eligible. So my preference is, let's get this thing moving. How do we do that? We've changed some things around, we were mandated to change some things around. We changed some management staff, we've changed our processes, we've expedited our processes, we're attempting to. We've hired in some additional consultants to help us with this process so that we can get as many homes done as possible within the next two years. We're already halfway through thirteen, it just went flying by. So one of the things that we must do for two reasons. One, we're mandated to get at least a thousand homes done every year. What I've done is extended, we've done a lot of things. We've changed our bid groups. Bid meetings, when we have you come in and apply for our process, apply for our program, we put you in a group. It was in a group of fifty, fifty homes, fifty units. We've expanded that to be like a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, so we can get as many in as possible and move them through fast. We've done that, we've accelerated the process on how we bid and how we advertise so we can move it faster. We're just moving, I mean, every two weeks we're advertising. Every month, we got, if you go to council meeting, you'll see on the council agenda where we are awarding to contractors every other week, every other month. You got, I mean, we're just trying to get as many through as possible. One other thing that is pressing, the federal government has come up with a new program guidance letter, and it, it is saying to us that we must go in and look at every home that we intend to insulate to see if they will qualify for a reduction in the noise factor before we do it. That's almost impossible, and it's going to cost a lot of money to go out and test to see whether or not you're qualified. So what I'm trying to do, what the department is trying to do, is let's just, before this gets into play, before they really come down and say, we have to do this, let's just get all the homes that's in that area that has to have that coming up, let's just do them and get it out of the way. So we went out, I did my homework for today's meeting, actually. Every single eligible home in District Four, I brought their name with me and their address. So if you, if you want to hang around, I'll be here until six o'clock, whatever time it takes. I will be here. If you, if you know that you haven't gotten your home done, you need to see me. We sent out letters to try to combat, how do we get people to come in, sign up for our program? We sent out, let me back up a little minute. The council had given us somewhat of a directive. They wanted us to look at single-dwelling homes before we moved on to multi-family homes. Because those are the single homeowners that's in the community. A lot of the multi-family homeowners don't live in Inglewood. So take care of the people that live here first. So we changed our profile and we started looking at single-family homes first. So I went through the whole system of every home in the city of Inglewood that was eligible for our program and said, okay, I'm going to send out a letter to every single family home that has not been insulated and have them come in, sign up for our program, put them on a fast track, and get the homes done. So I sent the letter out to three hundred and fifty-seven single-dwelling homeowners. We're going to be open on Saturday. I made the meeting for Saturday so that people that work would have the opportunity to come in. Out of the three hundred and fifty-seven, I had fourteen, fourteen homeowners come to the meeting. One that didn't reserve a space, but he came anyway. Now, that's a very low count, especially when you hear people, when are you coming? When are you coming? When are you coming? Now that we're offering this, I was somewhat embarrassed because I said, oh, great, let's get this thing going. I said, we're going to have to have a lot of people, had my whole staff come in. I had refreshments much like you. And it was just a very, very poor turnout. So I'm saying, what else can I do? We extended our hours. I've authorized my staff to take appointments at seven in the morning to six in the evening so that people that work can come in before work or after work. No appointments. Another thing that we did to expedite our process, when you'd have the homeowners, when we'd have the consultants come to your home to do the plans and they found that there was a code infraction, something with your property that needed to be corrected, it would stop you from moving on. So what we decided to do in March, let's send a team out, look at these homes before they even get signed up to a consultant. That way, when I give it to the consultant, it's completely a clean home. The ones that have a problem will give them notification, here's what you need to clean up. You're not that you're going to go past you, but we are going to move on to the ones that's clean so we can get these homes done. So we are still doing that. We offered that right on the spot on a Saturday. If you come to the meeting, we've sent a, sent one of our inspectors out to your house that day. Sign up that day, get your signature, notify, do the application, you're in the program. And oh, by the way, we'll go out and inspect your home. Fourteen people. So I need your help, I really need your help, to help me to help us so that we can get the homes done. The block club captains, if you need me to come out to a meeting, be glad to do that. If you need me to bring a notary to sign up the paperwork, get it done, whatever it takes, that's what we're willing to do. We're behind, we recognize it. We, I mean, I really do appreciate your patience, but now we got to come together and move it. I, I don't have anything else, well, I do have some good comments. Kind of talked about what we need to do. We are working really hard and we have made some progress. So far this year, we've closed out roughly about two hundred homes. By the time November first of December, we'll have another six hundred homes done. So we'll meet the goal of the thousand that we need to have done by next March. But I got to get the stock in there to move for the next year's thousand. So if I don't get the people to come in, I, I don't know what else to do. Maybe you can give me some ideas. I'm open to anything that you think might hap- I mean, all I know is that there is a lot of people in District Four, District Three, District One that have not signed up for our program.
Well, and let's also expand a little bit further, that here you heard, here you heard that three hundred, here you have that three hundred-plus residents, letters have gone to their homes as the homeowner and said, we are ready to now move forward on doing your home. And yet, fourteen responded. Fourteen. And then I am being challenged by the block club captains and the residents saying, when are you going to do my home that's outside the corridor? Well, the answer is, until those three hundred and others respond, they're on hold. And we also have a sunset date, December thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen. And if they don't get on the move, then we got to come up with some legislation as council to say that the train has left and you've just missed out on a twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollar home improvement that you opted not to respond to a letter. So that's the reason why, and you hear some people saying, let's move on, because their name has not been, been called, and that's critical. So you want to say one more comment, then we'll take a couple comments from the floor.
And I hear you saying, let's move on. I'm inclined to want to move on, but I'm obligated because those are the homes that are actually eligible in the contour. The rest of them was, would be okay to do, but we have to ensure that we have, did our due diligence in making sure that all the ones that were eligible had an opportunity. So I sent out second notices to those three hundred and fifty-seven. For August the third, which is next Saturday, we're having another Saturday meeting. It starts at nine, nine to one, they can come at nine, they can come at eleven, they can come at one, they can come at three, those different slots so that we don't, I thought I needed those slots because I thought I'd get an overwhelming response, so I didn't want to overflow the community room. But as it turned out, I probably could invite it two thousand, maybe I would have gotten fifty. I don't know. But any, at any rate, it's August the third. If you have some neighbors, friends that have not, and you know they're in District Four, District Three, it doesn't matter. If they want to come in August third, we won't turn anyone around. Although it was by letter-only invitational because I wanted to kind of be able to mandate, kind of man the crowd, but that doesn't seem to be a problem. So get the word out, we're there, we're willing to move as fast as possible.
We have a, we have a question.
This is at the City Hall in Community Room A.
City Hall, first floor, Community Room A. We have a question or comment from the floor?
I wanted to know if you have to be in a certain district for this program?
You had to be in the contour. District Two is not in our contour, so District One, Three, and Four, but there are certain addresses in probably each of those districts that's not eligible. So if you're further north or two further south, you're not eligible.
Okay, wait a minute, I can't have dialogue, ask the question.
I was just asking, is there a list of all the addresses named, of all the houses that are eligible for the sound insulation program? And is it published where we can go see it and we can go, I can go over Chris's house and say, hey, man, you're on the list, and you need to get this stuff.
I would love that to happen, but that's, we could not publicize anyone's address or, we can't.
Ms. Dunn?
My question is, in the letters that you're sending out, because of the, all the foreclosures and home losses over this period of time that this insulation program has been in, are the people still in there that you are contacting? That's one of the things, maybe why there are no responses for those letters that you're sending out. Maybe their ownership has changed.
Out of the three hundred and fifty-seven that I sent out, I got back four letters that was non-deliverable.
Okay, I think we have a question way in the back.
As I, I'm in that also, but my question is, my house is so old. In other words, it was built in nineteen twenty, older than my father. So one of the things that I did not apply as a homeowner is the house, I'm in process to do something, and to me, what a precious gift is going to be wasted in a house like that. So, so that's one of the reasons why I know I cannot apply, although I received the information.
You know, we have a lot of older stock homes in the city of Inglewood. So it's not uncommon to be in a home that's very old or that has been built years ago. But if I were you, sitting as a homeowner and knew this was a grant-funded program, I would at least have to take the opportunity and let someone come out, look at your home. I mean, we would replace your windows and your exterior doors, windows, give you centralized heating and air. And if your window structure is not sound enough to hold the windows, we would rebuild the frames around the window so that our heavy windows would be supported. So, but at least take the opportunity and have us come out and look at it.
Okay, we have to go move forward. We have to move forward. So what we're going to do is, Ms. Griffith said that she will remain afterwards. She will be over here at this table over here, if you're interested. The Lieutenant Freed is still here with us as well in the back. He will also be at a table outside to, if you want to have any, any issues of life, questions or comments. And there's also a staff member also with Residential Sound Insulation. So I know it's been a long, long day, but was it worth it? Are you glad you came? Will you share this information with friends, families, and loved ones? Okay, without further ado, meeting is officially adjourned. God bless you all, have a safe trip. Thank you.